Your PNM candidate for the constituency of Labree. And we're here in the borough of Point Fortin for our fourth installment of the PNM's All In Red, Ready and Responsible Tour. The excitement here is palpable. The crowds are building up and everyone is excited to hear what the PNM's message is today. We have an exciting lineup of speakers here today. Yours truly, your candidate for the constituency of Labree and your Minister of Tourism, Culture and the Arts. We also have MP Kennedy Richards, who has been your Member of Parliament in this, the borough of Point Fortin, the constituency of Point Fortin. It's the cleanest borough and it's the heartbeat of our energy in Trinidad and Tobago. We also have Lisa Atwater, who is your PNM candidate for the constituency of Maruga Tableland. So it's an exciting lineup of speakers. And last but not least, we have our Prime Minister Stuart Young, Senior Counsel, Member of Parliament and your candidate in the next election for Portisprin North St Anne's West. So as we cut away now, when we come back, you're about to hear an interview with your candidate for the constituency of Point Fortin, Kennedy Richards. See you on the other side.
Be all in for TNT on April 28th. Vote PNM. Great is the PNM. Can you really trust? Everywhere we go, country before party. We working together, we building together, we will make it better. Side by side, we standing for our nation's future. This is a movement, we all in together, not just the one. My sister, my brother, family's in your hand. PNM is the plan, ready, ready, hold it steady. We are one. We stand strong. We are one. We stand strong together, no no time to waste. A new chapter for TNT. We're red, ready and responsible on April 28th. Vote PNM. Great is the PNM.
Can you really trust the UNC? The last time Kamla and the cabal were in charge, they destroyed your energy sector. They failed to renew critical gas contracts and lied about production levels. They made bad deals and sold out TNT. The last time the UNC won, you lost billions of US dollars. If the UNC wins, you lose billions. We know how this movie ends. Make the last time the last time on April 28th. Reject the UNC.
Again. Hey. Oh na na na, ready and ready, yeah we all. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Calling out the red army. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Yeah. We all. We all. Na 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 na. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Calling out the red army. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Trinidad and Tobago. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Yeah. We all. Yeah. We red, red, ready now. Calling the red army, calling out all army. Friends and family with love for tea and tea. From the mountaintop to the valley low. Everywhere we go, country before party. We working together, we building together, we will make it better. Side by side, we standing for our nation's future. This is a movement, we all in together, not just the one. My sister, my brother, family's in your hand. PNM is the plan, ready, ready, hold it steady. We all then, we going through event. We all then, we on the road again. We all then, every queen and every race. We all then, together, no no time to waste. We all then, French accent to book for read. We all then, the policy is moving in. We all then, tell them this is a plan. We all then, the PNM we need again. We all then, taking it to the street, wherever we meet. We talking to everyone all over the country. The message is loud and clear, we want it to run the game. Spreading the word, a tree before party. Sun or rain, we remain, we gonna make things better. Young and old, we can stand it all. This is a new chapter, together we stand and our tribes intertwined. Working together, we all in the line. Let's do this together, your future and mine. Ready, ready, hold it steady. We all then, we going through event. We all then, we on the road again. We all then, every queen and every race. We all then, together, no no time to waste. We all then, French accent to book for read. We all then, the policy is moving in. We all then, tell them this is a plan. We all then, the PNM we need again. We all then, ready and ready, yeah we all. Yeah. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Trinidad and Tobago. Ready and ready, yeah we all. Yeah. We all. Yeah. We red, red, ready now. We working together, we building together, we gonna make things better. Side by side, we standing for our nation's future. This is a movement, we all in together, not just the one. My sister, my brother, family's in your hand. PNM is the plan, ready, ready, hold it steady. We all then, we going through event. We all then, we on the road again. We all then, every queen and every race. We all then, together, no no time to waste. We all then, French accent to book for read. We all then, the policy is moving in. We all then, tell them this is a plan. We all then, the PNM we need again. We all then, we going through event. We all then, we on the road again. We all then, every queen and every race. We all then, together, no no time to waste. We all then, French accent to book for read. We all then, the policy is moving in. We all then, tell them this is a plan. We all then, the PNM we need again. We all then.
Good evening, good evening and welcome back. I am Randall Mitchell, your PNM candidate for the constituency of Labree. And we're here at the fourth installment of the PNM's Red, Ready and Responsible Meet the People Tour. And with me on set in the beautiful constituency of Point Fortin, we have with us the Member of Parliament for Point Fortin and the candidate in the general elections, April 28th. We have with us Mr. Kennedy Richards. Good evening, Mr. Richards.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here.
So I am too, a son of Point Fortin, having resided here for many, many years in my formative years growing up. But Kennedy, back when I lived here for those six years, for those six wonderful years, I didn't have such an easy and quick time traversing the roads to get down here in the constituency of Point Fortin. And I know with the highway, you have played a really significant role in working with the Ministry of Works, working with the contractors, keeping them honest to deliver the highway for the people of Point Fortin. Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, Randall, thank you. And thank you for the introduction. But first let me thank the, 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 the Prime Minister, the Honourable Stuart Young, as well as the, the former Prime Minister and political leader of the People's National Movement, Dr. Keith Rowley, for the advocacy on this highway. And Minister Ruwan Sinan for actually being the one to champion and execute through his agencies, the NITCO and Ministry of Works and whatnot. So the highway has indeed played a, a, a great role in opening up the southwestern peninsula. So as you would know, a couple of years ago, let's say in your formative years, but a couple of years ago, to get from Point Fortin to San Fernando and back was a challenge. You know, and, and the highway is not fully open, but with the, the areas that we have access to, we can get to San Fernando and back without any hassle. So it has been, it has brought great ease to the people of Point Fortin. It has, it has more business to the people of Point Fortin and it has done wonders for us in Point Fortin. And it's something that we look forward to. We look forward to the, 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 the final hurdle being crossed, which is the pipeline, which has given us a bit of a challenge. We have to get the permission to cross that pipeline from, from, I think Shell or Energy CEO, one of those gas companies. And once that happens, then we will be fully ready. So it goes down from about 20 minutes of San Fernando to about 15. So it's, it's, it's exciting times here in the constituency of Point Fortin.
Exciting times indeed. And I can also tell you that when I lived here, we had use of a very small hospital. We call it a hospital, it was more like a health center in Clifton Hill. But now we see a brand new, beautiful facility, the Point Fortin Hospital. Tell us a little bit about that and how it has helped the constituents of Point Fortin and not just the constituents of Point Fortin, also the constituents of Labree and all in the southwestern peninsula.
Well, I will take it a little bit further, Honourable. I will take it a little bit further. This Point Fortin Hospital, before Grandi Hospital would have come on stream, before Arima Hospital would have come on stream, you know, this government built a lot of hospitals. You know, and before all of them would have come on stream, a lot of people would have come down to Point Fortin because it was newly opened, the services as they ruled out, you know, it was easy to get appointments, it was easy to do everything. So hospital is clean, hospital service, the, the staff is very friendly, the staff is, staff works with the people of Point Fortin and it continues to be something that we can boast about that our PNM government did for the people of Point Fortin, you know. And healthcare is one of the major things that has improved with that hospital. You know, the small hospital that we had, had before could not have taken the numbers that this hospital now does over daily.
But during the COVID pandemic as well, this hospital was one of those standout hospitals for the service delivery of healthcare for the people in the southwestern peninsula. And I'm sure you would have gotten a lot of feedback on that.
Well, that's, we had, we had really positive feedback on that during the COVID pandemic. But one of the challenges, so you know, it has positives, it has negatives. So you know, as soon as we, we basically opened the hospital, COVID came.
Yes.
So you know, people were angered that, listen, we now get the hospital, they're putting it on the COVID schedule. But that's what it was for, you know, it was the hospital, the purpose of the hospital is to save lives. The purpose of the hospital is to, is to give us a fighting chance, you know, and that gave us a fighting chance throughout the pandemic. And we had the use of the old one, you know, as well. And we, and we, we also did one where the old heritage come from.
Right.
So we were never left out, we were never left without a place where we could go and seek medical attention. So you know, kudos to, to, to Minister De Alsing, kudos to the government again for ensuring that, you know, Point Fortin has never left us, Point Fortin has never left behind. So that's one of the things that we can boast about.
Well, speaking about facilities and I, I've been hearing, because I still have friends in the constituency of Point Fortin.
I have friends.
You are my friend, but I'm, I'm, I'm talking to third parties and I'm, I'm hearing that you are one of those groundmen. But we have to again. Yeah. So I've been hearing that you really are a man of the people, a man on the ground, and you were able to deliver a number of facilities. And one of my old stomping grounds was the Mahika Oval. Tell us about the Mahika Oval and what good that has done for the sporting culture in the constituency of Point Fortin.
Well, the Mahika Oval, as you know, you, you played football as well. So the, the Mahika Oval was, is a legendary area for sports. You know, back in the day, Mahika Oval was football, cricket, track, sodan games, all games, any games, day, night time. And what we were able to do is to bring back that Mahika sporting complex, it's generally football now. But what we plan to do is utilize that facility and the training that is there to regenerate greatness in Point Fortin where sport is concerned. We had players like Leroy De Leon, Cax Bautista, the Brewsters, the Douglas Brothers, you know, and, and a lot of others, you know, if I, we could go all night talking about greats in Point Fortin. But that Mahika Oval is there primarily to give us that opportunity to recreate greatness and to, you know, make our stick for the national team players, you know, for the international scene. Football is something that generates a lot of, you know, you can make a living out of football. So we're going to ensure that our young people has that opportunity, not just to play locally, but also to develop that talent to play internationally as well.
And as somebody who is a, a Member of Parliament, you know, part-time as well as a pilot, part-time, how have you been able to remain grounded and remain determined to get all of these delivery items for the constituency of Point Fortin? I mean, I want to ask you your secrets because as a, a, a new candidate for the constituency of Labree, I also want to bring that level of service to the people and keep people and the welfare of the constituents at the forefront of our service delivery. But tell us, how have you been able to get, you know, all of these things? And, and tell us what's in store going forward post-April 28th, 2025? And what could people expect?
Well, listen, I, I keep it simple. I, I stay hungry, I, I stay on the, on the ground, I stay interacting with people and I stay doing normal things, you know. So I go to the hospital, so if I see something that is wrong or I see something that I don't like, I bring it up with them immediately because if I, I believe what is good for me is good for everybody in point. And what is good for everybody is also good for me, you know. So I just stay active, you know, whether it's sports, I stay, you know, grounded. What is to come, we have the Coronation Park that is ongoing, the pool is almost, almost done in about a couple of days. The pool should be completed. The Coronation Park would have a, a 2,000 seater stadium with an eight lane monza track. The track is going to be red, white and black as the national, as the national colors. We have the Point Fortin Heritage Administrative Building, which all of government services are going to come into one space. So you're going to go in there and there's going to be no hassle whatsoever. You can get people in one day, you can get all these services in one day. A lot of things are, are in store here in, in Point Fortin. But you know, the genesis of all of that is going to be hard work, the genesis of all of that is going to be having a PNM government in power to ensure that these things are completed. So vote PNM, great is the PNM, we are red, ready and responsible.
So thank you, Kennedy Richards, truly admirable. And we go to break and on the other side of the break, we are back with Paula Gopi Schoon, interviewing a very special guest.
We working, we building, we will make it better. Side by side, we standing for our nation's future. This is a movement, we all in together, not just the one. My sister, my brother, family's in your hand. PNM is the plan, ready, ready, hold it steady. We are one, we going through event. We stand strong, we on the road again. We are one, every queen and every race. We stand strong, together, no no time to waste. New chapter for TNT. We're red, ready and responsible. Vote PNM. Great is the PNM.
Can you really trust the UNC? The last time Kamla and the cabal were in charge, they squandered $24 billion in cash and ran up a $9 billion overdraft at the Treasury. All this while energy revenues went from 17 billion to 1 billion. The last time they won, you lost the Treasury. We know how this movie ends. Let's make the last time the last time on April 28th. Reject the UNC.
Again.
Yeah, it's good to reminisce. You know, it's, it's amazing to be at honeymoon grounds in El Dorado in Tunapuna. A place where I've lived, been all my life. I killed I went to school right there till View College right there. So this was really a exercise, sporting mecca. You know, I'll come here sometimes on mornings, sometimes on evenings, do a couple laps, do some exercise. You know, I mean mingle with some of the people that are here because again, it's, as you can see, it's very scenic. Tunapuna is really a nice place. Yeah, it's good to reminisce. You know, it's, it's amazing to be at honeymoon grounds in El Dorado in Tunapuna. A place where I've lived, been all my life. I killed I went to school right there till View College right there. So this was really a exercise, sporting mecca. You know, I'll come here sometimes on mornings, sometimes on evenings, do a couple laps, do some exercise. You know, I mean mingle with some of the people that are here because again, it's, as you can see, it's very scenic. Tunapuna is really a nice place, you know, I've lived here all my life. Five years as a councillor, 10 years as a Member of Parliament and I have served. I'm looking forward to, to a term just to serve the people, do what I can do best.
He help people who in need. He, he, he don't give them a run around when you want help, he, he help you, he is help you. He just take you serious.
Tunapuna looking good, Esmond at Tunapuna looking good, not now. Right? Not now, we at Tunapuna looking good, as, as years now, Esmond trying to fix road. All these roads and then what we rose into Tunapuna are good. I could say with Mr. Esmond, he is trying, he's really trying. And people should give him a chance because he's trying. As a Member of Parliament, most times you are judged on what you have delivered. In Tunapuna, we have delivered. We can talk about infrastructural development. We needed some roads to be paved. Yes, they were done, we could identify Mingo Road, we could identify Tunapuna Road, we could identify Baltazar Street, we could identify the Maracas area, we could identify with the Akono, the Saint Michael Village, a very small village in Tunapuna, up a Saint John Road. And all they needed was some drainage and again, here road to be paved and to given the necessary infrastructure. That was done. So again, I know Saint Michael Village is pretty much pleased. And then we could talk about the social aspects. How many persons receive self-help grants? How many persons receive wheelchairs? How many persons receive sympathy as a walking stick? And again, assisting individuals to qualify for their pensions, for their disability grants and the various grants that are offered by the Social Development Authority. In terms of community development, we can talk about the El Dorado Community Centre, which is right there, which would have opened during my tenure as a Member of Parliament within the last 10 years. And of course, in 2025, Exodus, the champions. Tunapuna and Esmond Ford is all in for TNT. Because to build a better Tunapuna, we must go all in.
A new chapter for TNT. We're red, ready and responsible. Vote PNM. Great is the PNM.
And welcome back. We're here in Point Fortin, in the borough of Point Fortin, in the constituency of Point Fortin. And I'm here and I'm joined with Paula Gopi Schoon Minister, Paula Gopi Schoon Minister of Trade and Industry. And we're here for the fourth installment for the PNM's Red, Ready and Responsible Meet the People Tour. So now the interviewer becomes the interviewee. So I pass on this interview to you, Paula Gopi Schoon, how are you feeling?
Very good, I'm happy. There's a lot of energy here at the Point Fortin East Secondary School. As you know, this was my stomping ground and I think it was your own as well.
Yes, I, I am a child of Point Fortin and I know you once represented the constituency of Point Fortin.
Absolutely, I, I was born and I grew up in Point Fortin and I represented for the Point Fortin constituency happily from the, from 2007 to 2015, 2010, 2015. I'm getting my maths right. And what a joy it was to serve the people of Trinidad and Tobago. And now Minister, here you are, moving from Senator the Honourable to the lower house. You are now going to be a Member of Parliament representing the Labree constituency.
Well, Member of Parliament, once again, from 2015 to 2020, I had the honour of serving the people of San Fernando East. And then in 2020 to 2025, I was asked by Dr. the Honourable Keith Rowley, Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago, former Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago, to serve as one of his Senate in the 12th Republican Parliament in the Senate Chamber. And now I have the distinct privilege and honour to be a candidate, to represent the people of the great constituency of Labree. And it is indeed a privilege, it feels great. I am, I know the constituency. I spent a lot of time in the constituency. Of course, I'm a child of Point Fortin, but I spent a lot of time, I went to school in the, in the constituency. So I feel really good. And you know, since I have been selected, I have been really warmly welcomed by the executive and members of the People's National Movement within the Labree constituency. And since I've been walking, I really have been embraced with open arms by all the residents we encounter.
It is said that Labree is PNM, but Minister, I'm sure that you're making your rounds on both sides of the constituency. We all know that Labree is somewhat geographically divided. So there's the Labree that we know and there's the Palos Seco and, and the, the other environs that we also know. Minister, are you hitting both sides?
I am hitting both sides with a distinct sense of excitement. So on the north side, you have areas all the way down from Aripero to Rosilac to Labree, all the way up to, to Labree and there are communities such as Sobu, Cochrane, Vance River, Parrylands, all the way up to Salazar Trace, which is very, very close to us here in, you know, the constituency of Point Fortin. And on the south side, we start from Quarry Village in Suparia and we go along to Santa Flora, to Los Baho, to Palos Seco, all the way down to Rancho Quimaro and Aireen. So it is a wide geographical area, but it really is an area rich in cultural heritage, rich in sporting heritage. And you know, it's the, the oil belt, it's considered the oil belt of Trinidad and Tobago. A lot of energy-rich resources and it truly is a privilege to serve and to be within the constituency of Labree.
Absolutely, it is a neighbouring constituency to Point Fortin. And I have seen a number of persons here with the Labree t-shirts supporting their MP for Labree, Randall Mitchell, soon to be MP for Labree. But tell me something, we've done a lot for the, that is, the PNM for the Labree constituency. And I'm sure you have plans already on your mind. What do you think you're going to bring to the table in your manifesto? What are the key takeaways?
We have done a lot for the constituency of Labree. I mean, just drive. I mean, just driving through Labre, um, Brighton Estate, you pass the Labre Industrial Estate and you see all of these industrial plants. And each one of these plants have been developed for the people of this southwestern peninsula. In particular, the people of the constituency of Labre and the people of the constituency of Point 14 by the People's National Movement. We have done a lot, but of course, we deserve more. Labre and Point 14, we in the southwestern peninsula, in these energy-rich constituencies have delivered a lot in terms of, you know, national resources to our national development. Over the past years, and I have to thank the outgoing MP, um, Stephen McClatchy, for his work, his commitment to national service and his commitment to the people of Labre. And over the five years, um, we have delivered, the PNM has delivered through MP McClatchy, a brand new community centre in Labre. We've done a number of water projects in the Carapal area that has delivered water three times a week, which is a vast improvement to over 300,000 persons in the Labre constituency. Uh, through the Ministry of Youth Development and National Service, with a collaboration of Heritage, we have some youth training skill centres in the constituency of Labre and the Ministry of Youth Development and National Service. Also, they have developed uh, youth training centres in Palos Seco and in Los Baho in Bennett Village. So there are a lot that has been delivered. As for going forward, I wish to continue the development of the constituency. As I say, we feel we deserve more and I will continue to deliver for the people of the constituency of Labre. What is needed, there is some uh, physical infrastructure that's needed. We need some repaved and resurfaced roads. There are some drainage issues. We are getting, um, I should tell you, a brand new Palos Seco velodrome.
Excellent.
I know that you would know and you would have your days back in, in the day of visiting the, the velodrome, which was probably the premier sporting facility in Trinidad and Tobago for cycling, for cricket, for football and a number of other sporting activities. And we're getting a brand new velodrome. So I intend to see a lot of those projects through. In the constituency of Labre as well, we have a very, very large young person demographic, demographic. There are a lot of people under the age of 18. And I'm seeing that while government does have a number of programmes for young people, perhaps we can do a little better in ensuring the access. We have uh, through the Ministry of, of Youth Development and National Service, some new facilities, some new training facilities coming here and they are due to bring a number of the government programmes, training in a lot of different skills, technical skills, barbering, hairdressing, nail technicians, a lot of those. So I really intend to work to ensure that education is at the forefront and skills training for young people in the constituency of Labre remains paramount.
Excellent. Lots of plans, but Minister, I know that you have been an outstanding minister, Minister for Tourism, Culture and the Arts. And of course, tourism-wise, Labre has a world famous pitch lake. What are your plans for tourism in Labre?
We have the world famous Pitch Lake, ancient Pitch Lake. Um, you know, we are responsible for the museum at the Pitch Lake and we're responsible for visitors and tourism that occurs at the Pitch Lake. And we have been maintaining the Pitch Lake facility quite well. And I mean, we see a number of visitors eager, always eager to come and see what we uh, see as the eighth wonder of the world. But not just the Pitch Lake. We also have the Vesney Beach Facility that at the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and the Arts, we have developed and it has been refurbished over the years. And I would say, without a shadow of the doubt, without, without a shadow of a doubt, that the Vesney Beach Facility is the best beach facility under our management in all of our tourism sites and attractions. We also have, and soon to be developed, uh, there is a Lucero Mud Volcano and that contract is due to be signed and awarded soon, where we are going to build a facility um, around a, a much lesser known volcano, but it is quite a wonder. We have the Lucero Beach Facility as well. Um, we have Station Beach. I mean, the, the constituency is bordered by two coastlines. So it really, really is an amazing time. As I said, the constituency is blessed with rich natural resources, including the two coastlines with some of the best beaches and the best sailing.
Oh, that's right.
I should tell you that on the Vesney Beach Facility, there is an amazing sailing club and sailing, um, sailing lessons teaching that goes on through the Ministry of Sport and the, the, the southwestern peninsula of the Vesney Beach and off Clifton Hill Beach has some of the best sailing in all of Trinidad and Tobago. So I mean, it's an amazing time to be an MP. It's an amazing place to be a member of parliament. There is so much to develop and to deliver along the people of the constituency of Labre.
Well, Labre deserves the best and they are in fact getting one of the better ministers coming to Labre, the next MP for Labre. And uh, it's a wrap. We are now going to go stateside. Member, the, the, the current Member of Parliament for Point 14, Mr. Kennedy Richards is, will be up soon on. We want to hear him and we will be back to you. It's a wrap for now.
I must do a roll call this evening. And we are here in the beautiful borough of Point 14. And I must welcome all of those who came from far near, assembled here at the Point 14 East Secondary School. Is Labre in the house? And who have we have, Faizabad? And who have we have, Orput West?
You see, you're the best.
All right, you're on here tonight. Tabakit? All right?
All right.
Point 14!
Wait, we touch down, we touch down, we touch down.
Let us wake up Point 14 this evening. The CEO of Red Hair sends a bold message to the people who oppose us. Them pick-up side who all over the place can't even fill a room like at the People's National Movement. Prime Minister and Chairman of the Party, the Honourable Stuart Young SC, who's on his way. The next Member of Parliament for Point 14, the Honourable Kennedy Richards Junior. The next Member of Parliament for Labre, the Honourable Randall Mitchell. The next Member of Parliament from Maruga Tableline, Lisa Atwater. Party officers, other members of Cabinet here assembled. PNM people, good afternoon. I am here for a very important yet simple rule, to introduce your next speaker. The same way he does fly people in and out of Trinidad, he will fly out the UNC, he will fly out MEP outside of Point 14. The same way, the same way he is able to bring remedy for you here in Point 14 and your new hospital, your new highway, community centre, all over the place. He is Kennedy the remedy. I have had the privilege, I have had the privilege of working under the next speaker. And I can say to you that his heart is full of gold, that he has a heart for the development of Point 14, that no other person could, could try to come against the MP, Mr. Kennedy Richards Junior. They can say what they want, they can say what they want. The next speaker has performed well. He has performed diligently and he is here to you for you to give him a next vote. Come April 28th, he will become your next MP. I welcome to you, I welcome to you, your next Member of Parliament for Point 14, the Honourable, the Honourable Kennedy, Kennedy Richards. Is there anybody in here from the constituency of Labre? Is there anybody in here from the constituency of Point 14? But most important, is there anybody in here from the People's National Movement? Are we red, ready and responsible? Allow me to recognise this evening, our party chairman and Prime Minister, the Honourable Stuart Richard Young SC, who's on his way. My colleague and brother, the Honourable Randall Mitchell, candidate as the next Member of Parliament for Labre. Other members of the Cabinet, it's Worship the Mayor, Olloman Clyde James and members of the Point 14 Borough Council, party officers, and permit me to stick it up in. From his June, Hugh Williams. Make some noise, people. From his June, Hugh Williams. Make some noise, people. Members of the media. PNM people. Welcome to Point 14. This is the PNM Army. Welcome to Point 14. How good and pleasant it is to see the PNM Army out here in its thousands. And I beg you, don't make too much noise before the five services come here this afternoon. We are gathered here in what I call the Peninsula of Progress. Cause we in the PNM distinguish ourselves from those pick-up sides. And on every PNM platform, you are assured to be politically educated about serious matters of state and how our PNM government has defended our boat right today, yesterday and tomorrow. Brothers and sisters, those that oppose us come before us only during election time to manipulate our young people with lies, deception and hypocrisy. They are outright trying to make you believe that your PNM... And I pause to recognise... No? One minute. So brothers and sisters, those that oppose us come before us, come before us only during election time to manipulate our young people with lies, deception and hypocrisy. They are outright trying to make you believe that your PNM government and your PNM Member of Parliament did nothing for you. But tonight, I want to send a, a message to the political pick-up sides that our track record in Point 14 speaks for itself. And I would like to ensure that our people remember what we have done, what we are doing and what we will continue to do in this peninsula. I will go into detail of the many notings that the PNM has done in Point 14. Noting number one, education. My brothers and sisters, Point 14 compared to other areas in Trinidad and Tobago can boast in less than four years, Point 14 has received four brand new primary schools. In Fanny Village, the UNC left. And our children in Fanny Village, Hollywood, Captiveville and those areas, they only knew the community centre to be their school. But under this current PNM government and your PNM Member of Parliament, the people of Fanny Village received a brand new primary school, signed, seed and delivered at the cost of $37.5 million. We opened a brand new school in Chatham, expanding our classroom stock to accommodate a growing need for children to be in schools in our constituency. A project that was also abandoned by the UNC. As a representative, I represent all of the people in Point 14, people in Sejas, Bonas, Icacas, Granville. And though we in the PNM are not favoured in those areas, the PNM believes in representation for all people. And ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to stand as we celebrate, as we introduce and welcome our Prime Minister. Put your hands together one more time for the honourable Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. Ladies and gentlemen, I saw that the young army came behind the Prime Minister. So we must give him a Point Fortin welcome. Is there anybody in here from Point Fortin?
Give out to everybody in Trinidad and Tobago. And that is why today,
as we go along, we were just speaking about being all in for everybody in Trinidad and Tobago. And that is why today, in Southern Central, we can boast of completing the Southern Central Anglican Primary School. That was a wooden structure. And for years, the students, teachers, and parents have been demanding a new school, which was forgotten by the UNC. It took a PNM Member of Parliament and a PNM government to deliver to the people of Coromandel and Granville a spanking new Southern Central Anglican Primary School. But brothers and sisters, we did not stop there. Further in the peninsula, we saw the disarray in Bonus Anglican Primary School. And being a responsible representative that I am, I made a case for the people of Sejus. And today, the residents of Bonus, Fullerton, and Bamboo can benefit with an improved investment in their area, the newly-built Bonus Anglican Primary School. I must give thanks to my PNM government, the Minister of Education, the Honourable Ian Gadsby Dolly, for working with me to improve our educational infrastructure. When re-elected, I will be working to improve the Point Fortin Roman Catholic School, the Guapo Government Primary School, and this very school, the Point Fortin East Secondary School. But I am not stopping there. They say we ain't do nothing. Well, I am moving on to nothing number two, youth development. See, friends, their idea of youth development is to have a catch-and-rescue competition on Facebook. Their idea of youth development is to give young black boys $200 and $500 to do Facebook videos to cost the PNM. Their idea of youth development is to use influencers and pay them $40,000. I know they get the $40,000. Right? But some of them can't even identify their names on a paper by telling you and I that yellow is the code and we suffer it. That is their idea of youth engagement and development. But in the PNM and in Point Fortin, youth development is about making our youth recognise their talents and supporting them to become the best that they can be and to become responsible citizens of Trinidad and Tobago. As a responsible Member of Parliament, I campaigned in 2020 and gave you, the people of Point Fortin, an undertaking that we will reopen the Chatham Youth Camp. And it was a UNC government. Let's not forget, it was a UNC government that shut down every youth programme in Trinidad and Tobago, closed off the Chatham Youth Camp, denying hundreds of young people an opportunity to be trained, supported, and mentored. One of the reasons why some of our young people may be involved in civilian activities is because they are not properly guided in their home, sometimes in the communities. And you need safe spaces that the youth camp set up to provide that much-needed guidance and support system so that they can become responsible young people. The UNC don't have time for that. But came in the PNM, came Kennedy Richards and the Honourable Foster Commons. And today, the youth camp, which shall be now known as the Chatham Youth Development Apprenticeship Centre, is 80% complete. You can go and see the extensive work taking place down there to improve the facility. And I am advised by the Minister of Youth Development on national service that the centre will be improved and expanded and expand the training and mentorship that will provide, once open, there will be an intake of 250 tradeees yearly. And the centre will be working in conjunction with NESC and MIC to provide comprehensive 21st vocational training so that our young people can become employable and entrepreneur. I realise how the UNC is trying to play with some of our people's ignorance, saying that there is no youth programmes in Point Fortin. But tonight, I tell them, the two liars and wicked. I would not allow them to get political amnesia by the blue and yellow poison. But I will remind you that it was the UNC who said you didn't deserve opportunities and they shut down the NESC campus in Maika. And the young people had to go to Kuva and Princess Tong to be trained by the NESC. But my friends, in came the People's National Movement, whose policy understands that if we don't empower the youth, then we do not empower our nation. They saw the state of that facility. And today, we are transforming that facility into a youth development centre in Maika. And that is, my friends, is 100% completed. Those youth development centres shall become youth empowerment hubs in our community for trading of all kinds to be delivered to institutions like YTEP, UTT, UE, NESC, and so much more under one roof. So you want to do a short course in psychology? You can go to YDC. You want to do a short course in barbering? And here, Justin, you can go to YDC. You want to do events management? You can go to YDC. You want to learn about food processing? You can go to YDC. You want to get any opportunity? You can go to YDC, right here in Maika and Point Fortin, ladies and gentlemen. These opportunities are endless. And the youth development centre will also provide safe spaces for youth organisations like our Police Youth Clubs or youth groups like Noel Left Behind can call YDC their home as it will become a beacon of youth development in Point Fortin and environs. Young people, as your Member of Parliament, I know you have studied hard and you have achieved your qualifications in your respective fields. And for some of you, you are looking out for a job in your field. For the last three years, I have hosted job and career markets right in the South West Indo arena, bringing professionals, companies, and agencies from all over the country on board to engage with your qualifications and for you to network with them. Over 2,100 young people have engaged and benefited from these career markets that I have hosted. I know how frustrating it can be to secure employment, especially in your specific line, in your profession, being that it may be saturated. But I encourage you to work with me. And I give you the undertaking that when re-elected, I will champion the establishment of a Point Fortin Young Professionals Association, where young professionals can join and use that opportunity to network with professionals across the nation, region, and the world. And this association with my support will advocate for you to be involved, aware, and engaged with many opportunities for employment, training, development, business creation, and so much more. This takes me to nothing number three, physical infrastructure. Ladies and gentlemen, to those manipulators and deceivers trying to stir up unadulterated anger and hate against the PNM, and I, as your MP, have neglected you with roads and physical infrastructure. An article came out the other day where I shared that over $200 million was spent on the roads within the Point Fortin constituency over the last five years. And they tried to kill me. But unlike them, I do not have to lie or deceive you. The proof is in the level of delivery, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, more work needs to be done. Yes, more roads over time will be maintained. But in governance, everything cannot be done at the same time. There's limited resources that must be shared across the nation. We have 41 constituencies and 14 municipal corporations, all fighting for the same thing. And good governance is ensuring that all are able to benefit from the same pie. But in Point Fortin, within the last five years, our road network has increased exponentially in all of its existence. And I want to list how the work that was done by me as a Member of Parliament and my PNM government. The Point Fortin Highway that brought you from Van River to Dunlop. And I ain't talking about the whole thing. I'm not talking about the whole thing. I'm talking about from roundabout to roundabout. Package 5C cost this PNM government, this responsible PNM government, $235 million. And that is more than $200 million. Going at a days, we're coming in and out of Point Fortin was a task. I am certain that everybody here tonight travels to San Fernando and back very easily. And for that simple reason, we can say great is the PNM. Today, you in and out of Point Fortin, in 15 minutes, we resurfaced one road, $3.2 million. E Street, G Street, H Street, PNM Billat 2, Porta Grande Road, Renner Richardson Street, PNM, Jackson Trace, PNM, Essential Mary Road, Icaca's, PNM, the Chatham Land Slip for $25 million is PNM, the Coromona Land Slip Rehabilitation Road, PNM, the Cochrane Land Slip is PNM, the Sejus Land Slip is the PNM Billat, the Red Road Land Slip is the PNM, the Paving of Captiveville to the junction is PNM, the Grappe River Road, so, PNM, the number eight connector road to the highway, the PNM Billat, Full Cup 1 and 2, PNM Billat, all in this here. Hawk Avenue, Spring Trace, T Shae, Erin, Salvation Road, PNM. As the saying goes, ladies and gentlemen, the party now starts. And come the 29th, the PNM will be doing more in the constituency of Point Fortin. I take it that the not a nothing. In sport and community development, Point Fortin remains a shining light in this arena. The people of Point Fortin, was there any Maika oval under the UNC? Only song like the only show. Was there any Maika oval under the UNC? You know song like the show. Was there any T Shae community sent down under the UNC? I hear, I hear. Was there any T Shae community sent down by the UNC? Was there any Coronation Park development under the UNC? Somebody said the fact, was there any fast station under the UNC? Oh, let's tell them. Oh, let's tell them. Was there any Bonus Aries community sent down under the UNC? And I go say no. I can say no too. It is because we believe in the PNM that you deserve it, that you have it now. And the UNC outside here telling people that the PNM did nothing. If there's one thing about me, ladies and gentlemen, I will not sit down in a position, let's not sit down in a position, see. Alright, I always on the move. We going there, we going there, you hold on. You hold on, we going there. $1.2 billion as we going there. But ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to see that the Maika Sporting Complex finally being delivered to the people of Point Fortin. For the first time in years, we can see the return of professional football leagues across Trinidad and Tobago and the reason at the historic Oval. Our churches, schools, community groups now have a modern facility to host their sports day and competitions. In culture, and before we move into culture, ladies and gentlemen, before we move into culture, over the last two years, some of you all here may not know it was Minister Young, as the Minister of Energy, who ensured that Point Fortin Civic Centre Football Team had a sponsorship to the tune of $2.5 million. And we had a club like that. In culture, as it borrowed, festival intensifies. We have countless promoters and organisers are now utilising the sport complex as a preferred venue to host their events, making the Maika Sports Complex an example of real people empowerment and community development in action under the hands of the People's National Movement. I move to Coronation Park, ladies and gentlemen. I'm 28 years old. But in 2010, they were saying 40 years ago, we promised Coronation Park. And before I dive into that, it was Minister Young who ensured that Coronation Park is started. And we are in progress as we speak. And I know on the 28th, we will defend Coronation Park and this progress in Point Fortin. The Coronation Park is being redeveloped into two phases by Udycott. Phase one is currently underway with the establishment of a brand-new Coronation Park Sports Complex, which will include an eight-lane mondo track. And the mondo track will be red, white, and black for national unity. This facility will provide the first rate training for groups such as Civic Centre Jets, Point Fortin New Jets, and the creation of more Point Fortin-born athletes like Dream Richards, you have Marshall, C D N O, you have Justin Maloney, and you have others who have come before, Alvin Daniel. When I'm re-elected and we complete phase one, we will move on to phase two, which will see the refurbishment of the indoor arena, the sporting club, tennis centre, lights at the tennis centre, and more external parking in the Coronation Park. Point people, ask those pretenders who want to deceive you again for your vote, what have they done to represent you? Where were they in the last 10 years? They only appear when it's election time. One come from St Joseph, former point man, well, one come from St Joseph. Saying he knows your problems, respect. I respect the gentleman, but he come only from St Joseph, the Point Fortin. Next one playing political hopscotch. One made in the MSG. One made here independent. One made it at UNC. But if you know me well, you know that I'm a very respectable young man. And I don't carry bacchanal and confusion in my politics. I will not do that, but tonight... But tonight, when they were a part of the partnership in 2010, and a certain minister come down to Point Fortin and say, if I'll vote for the PNM, we will get nothing. I didn't call the name. You see why I don't call, I didn't call the name. What I am saying to you tonight, ladies and gentlemen, go to Maika, take a look at the Civic Centre. It was in progress when the PNM government was in power. And today, when the UNC took over from 2010 to 2015, it is in court. That is what happens when we take God out of our thought and vote out a PNM, a vote out PNM out of the government. Keep that in mind. My friend was MSG, UNC at the same time. I don't know how we balancing it. Cool fellow, we cool. He cool, I cool, we cool. But you know that I am PNM. But you know that I am PNM. In twenty-thirteen, it was the same UNC who fired him from Tramana. And then in twenty-sixteen, it was the PNM who fired him back there. We call no names, well, you know what I'm talking about. Listen, ladies and gentlemen, the same way I just fly people out and in at this country, I'll fly the politics in Point Fourteen come twenty, come the twenty-eighth of April. This address, my friends, tonight only outlines on the surface the type of representation that are provided for the last five years. And the type of good governance that we had under the People's National Movement, you have experienced since twenty-fifteen. And as the campaign intensifies, I will share with you what was done in community by community. I will even break it down to polling division by polling division. Because all fifty polling divisions was touched by the People's National Movement. But I must make some special mentions of what we have done and what we are doing in the furtherance of your development. One, the establishment of the Point Fourteen Heritage Administrative Complex. You know, I know catch it myself. You know, Stewart Young put a project in place again too. I gotta watch myself in Point Fourteen, boy. I have been able to successfully lobby the establishment of what I call a government one-stop shop. Government is investing over fifty million dollars to reconfigure the old Petrucci Administrative Building into an administrative complex. I'd like to thank our Prime Minister, the Honorable Stewart Young, who made it his duty to visit with me back in twenty-twenty-two, when he was the Minister of Energy along with the Chairman of Heritage. And in short order thereafter, we ensured that that building was fit for purpose. In one place, you can get passport, license, birth paper, public utilities, essentially freeing up all these spaces. And we're not going back to that two-week birth paper taking Point Fourteen. We passed that stage. We go into San, we were one-day birth paper in Point Fourteen. The Adopah Child School Initiative. Ladies and gentlemen, this project of mine is very close to my heart. Because for the last four years, we supported you, the people of Point Fourteen, and across the nation that believe to Adopah Child Initiative. And today, approximately one million dollars have been spent through fundraisers, donations, and contributions over the last four years, providing school books, stationary, and support to over seven hundred trillion, impacting more than fifteen hundred families across Point Fourteen. Water supply. Water supplies has improved significantly under my ten years as Member of Parliament. Some areas, for the first time, now have a regular supply of water. With the then Minister of Public Utilities Marvin Gonzalez playing a pivotal role in this achievement. We just turned this side for the establishment of the Chatham Water Treatment Plant, which will enhance the delivery of water in the peninsula and here in Point Fourteen. All major recreation grounds and sporting facilities are now fully lit, from Gonzalez to Seajust, delivery PNM style. And let us not forget the pride of Point Fourteen, our brand-new Point Fourteen Hospital. I tell you, coming. With our healthcare professionals providing human and quality service delivered by the People's National Movement. Ladies and gentlemen, people of Point Fourteen, on election day, the choice is lucidly clear. Let us not regress and put those irresponsible agents of chaos into the corridors of power again. We have seen improvement, we have seen good governance, we have seen vision exemplified into the caring hands of the People's National Movement. And if we take God off our thoughts and put those wimps, pimps, and pimps into government, all this progress that I speak of will no longer be afforded to you. And if you read the papers today, you heard what will happen to the San Fernando waterfront. The nothing that they speak about will be clearly true. But I am confident that the people of Point Fourteen are responsible. I am confident that the people of Point Fourteen are right-thinking citizens. I will choose a steady, stable, and sober leader in the likes of Stewart Young SC. The comparison, or the comparisons, or the alternatives are all disoriented. And I know you, the people of Point Fourteen, and the people of Labray, will choose representation that works for you, not those that try to embarrass you, or manipulate you, or spread hate and sow seeds of discord among us. But I understand my opponents, they are frustrated because they have been diagnosed with political impotence. For some time, they are angry and they are tired of their political stagnancy. But when you come against the PNM in Point Fourteen, we will give you a political rest. And ladies and gentlemen, when all is said and done, and when all those ballot boxes are counted and one before the stroke of midnight, Point Fourteen shall be the first city to be declared PNM, PNM, PNM. And it is then we shall know that Trinidad and Tobago has been returned to the safe hands of the PNM, ready for the next chapter under Prime Minister Stewart Young. And we shall all gather right in Market Square, right behind the market, right in the PNM office, and declare that great is the PNM, great is the PNM, great is the PNM. And we have prevailed. I thank you. We're coming, we're coming, we're coming, we're coming. As you know, in the PNM, ladies and gentlemen, we have many good speakers. And next up is our candidate from Maruga. And we say, salt is love. You say, Lisa, Lisa, life is better without water. That's it? So let's hear it. A Lisa, 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 Lisa. And we bring Lisa and water to the stage, ladies and gentlemen, from Maruga.
Everybody shouting, we voting for Lisa. In Maruga Tableland, she is a daughter of a soil. She knows how to pray and toy. So we coming out on election day, but we everybody bally say, one, two, three, four, who we gonna vote for? Lisa, Lisa, we better with our water. Five, six, seven, eight, who is the winning candidate? Lisa, Lisa, we better with our water. Eh, 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 uh-huh, uh-huh. Eh, 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 eh. Metan is a coming, from Maruga Tableland, everybody vote.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, my fellow candidate. The Chairman of our great party, Prime Minister, the Honorable Stewart Young SC, Honorable Members of Parliament, fellow candidates, loyal Members of the People's National Movement, Members of the media, and most importantly, my friends, my neighbors, my community of support, the proud people of Point Fourteen, Labray and Enviants, and definitely Maruga Tableland. I stand before you tonight, humbled, honored, and driven by a purpose greater than myself. When I was asked to speak, I said, point? Yeah, I could do that. Yes, I can do that because I thought immediately of the fact that your former MP, the Honorable Paula Gopi Schoon, has been a champion from Maruga Tableland. She has been a tower of support for me and for this campaign. So yes, I turn up in point and I'd have a conversation because this campaign is important. This campaign is not just about politics, it's about people, it's about possibility, and certainly about progress. And make no mistake, this is serious work. We in Maruga Tableland have been toiling, we have been walking, we have been working since the twenty-sixth of September. And as I was telling Minister recently, we'd stop work, I will stop work around five thirty PM on Monday, the twenty-eighth of April. Because this is about the future of Trinidad and Tobago. And your presence here tonight certainly signals that you are invested in this great movement. You are invested in our future, and you are invested in good governance. Clearly, you have the vision that People's National Movement is the way to go. People's National Movement has to continue in office. And we in the People's National Movement have always been about building this nation. We've done it in the past, we are doing it presently, and we will continue with your support to do it in the future. So we cannot rest, and we cannot slow down because we are about to write a new chapter together. Are you ready? Are you ready? Point Fourteen, are you ready? Maruga Tableland, are you ready? I am certainly ready. So let me tell you a little bit about myself. I am a product of People's National Movement policy. I am a school teacher. I got my education under the People's National Movement. I, I started my career on the twenty-fourth of May, nineteen ninety-four. So next month, when the twenty-fourth of May rolls around, if, I'm not, if, when the twenty-fourth of May rolls around, I will be in Parliament. Haven't given thirty years and eleven months of my life to Maruga Secondary School. Teaching has been my calling. I have mentored many young minds, and that is my pride. And that is what service is about. And it's through that same spirit that I stand here today, not just as a teacher, but as a servant of the people. Teaching is about investing in others, and so is leadership. And no other party understands that philosophy more than the People's National Movement. So what better party to serve the people than the PNM? Let us ensure that when this electorate vote Point Fourteen, Labray, San Fernando East, San Fernando West, Maruga Tableland, and so many more, and so many more seats, all forty-one seats, and we have, my school says we believe in hope. So we believe in hope that we will all be under the banner of the People's National Movement. And that I expect that constituencies that are rural like ours will continue to have better foundation and that we will be respected and continue to be prioritized. So I thank the People's National Movement, our great government, for all that they have done, and I know we will continue to bear on it. And I like to call myself a child of the community. I wear my heritage on my sleeve. And as a sixth-generation American, I really know what community means. Community service has been my life. That's why I have chosen to offer myself to serve at an even greater level. Not for status, not for applause, but to give back to the place and the people who shaped me, to work with you, to work besides you, and to write the next chapter together. So what are my plans from Maruga Tableland? It is my hope that we will have enhanced opportunities for youth development. Our youth population is our greatest asset and the key to unlocking national growth and progress. For the best possible future, I am committed to the creation of programs and policies that will promote youth development and empower them to participate in all national conversations. I expect to be part of the process of the growth of local employment and increased business ownership, entrepreneurship, and self-sufficiency in Maruga Tableland. I am committed to creating opportunities for our people to gain successful, secure employment, to be productive, and to own businesses that will benefit our community, our nation, and regionally. Of course, I love to see the expansion of agricultural production and capacity building for the processing of fish and agricultural products. And I've repeatedly said that we have enough to feed ourselves. Our community has a rich legacy of agriculture, farming, fishing, and food production. And it is my hope that I will be able to partner with all of Maruga Tableland to ensure that these avenues are fulfilled. In the case of tourism, I would like to see that we practice sustainable tourism. Our community is an ideal destination for ecotourism. I am committed to exploring avenues that will promote sites of interest and to market our rich cultural heritage. And as a teacher, I certainly want to see our young ladies, that's my, that's my baby, I really want to see our young ladies become more independent. Our young ladies must be able to take care of themselves. As a woman born and raised in this community, I believe in the advancement of women. And as such, I intend to pay extra attention to ensure. to ensure that our women continue to stand their own. We in here are all familiar with the fact that we've had great mothers who made tremendous sacrifices to ensure that we reach the stage. And as Member of Parliament for Maruga Tableland, I want to see our young ladies go even further. So what are we going to do in the next 20 days? We have to show up, we have to organise, we have to energise, we have to mobilise, and we have to go out and vote. And keep in mind that there will be detractors who will ask, "So what PNM do?" And when they ask, point them to the roads, point them to Point Hospital, point them to the agri-processing plant, point them to the sports facility and the fishing depot, point them to Gait, point them to the numerous youth programmes that are available. Point them, point them, point them. Because these aren't just promises, these are results delivered by the People's National Movement. And that's the difference. That is People's National Movement commitment. So I call on you, on all of you, to make the next 20 days count. Work with your neighbours, work with your candidates, talk to your friends, visit your elders, talk to our youth, and preach to every household. Because this election is not just about being red, blue, or anything else. This election is about Trinidad and Tobago. And there's only one way forward. You have to vote for the People's National Movement. Vote for a PNM that is interested in investing in your child's future. Vote for stability, vote for strength. And let it be very clear that no matter of your age, gender, background, this is the movement for you. People's National Movement is for all of Trinidad and Tobago. And your voice matters, your effort matters. So let's get to work, let's find every voter. Let's bring them with us, because together we can, and together we win. So to every PNM member, every PNM family member here tonight, I thank you. I thank you to those who have given their times, their ideas, their sweat, their tears. A special, special thank you to the foot soldiers. Our foot soldiers continue to sustain us. Our foot soldiers continue to turn up. Our foot soldiers continue to walk every single day. Our foot soldiers putting up banners. Our foot soldiers canvassing. Our foot soldiers taking photos. Our foot soldiers say, "Come on, miss, we're still going there." Our foot soldiers saying, "We have to do it." Our foot soldiers saying, "You're tired, but come on." My foot soldiers has bring food for me every evening. My foot soldiers does turn up with coconut water. My foot soldiers does work with two panadol. My foot soldiers had sweet oil for me when I lost my voice after nomination last Friday. My foot soldiers present. So I thank you, I thank you. Let us keep reaching, let us keep delivering, let us keep the message of service alive. Let's keep going, let's keep pressing to progress. I thank my family for standing with me. My mother is here tonight, today is her birthday. And I told her, I said, "Woman, we will have a double celebration after the 28th of April." I thank my church for standing with me. I thank my staff for standing with me. I thank all the students who came out and defended me last week when a people attempted to assassinate me. When that video hit viral, and I never talked to the individual, never had an interaction, never, I said to myself, "My God, I want to damage my campaign." And then I started to see my children come out in their numbers. My children defended me. And I've repeatedly said that my children are going to save me and make sure that we are victorious. I thank them. I thank the People's National Movement leadership for believing in me. I thank my church, and above all, I give thanks to God Almighty. Because without him, none of this would have been possible. So I repeatedly say, "But God, but God, but God." So I ask you all, mark your calendars. We are 20 days away. Monday, the 28th of April, is fast approaching. That's the day we decide our future. That's the day we step forward with confidence. And when the ballots are counted and the people have spoken, we will again gather and declare, "Great is the PNM! Great is the PNM! Great is the PNM!" And we shall prevail! So I close by saying, thank you to Point Forteen. Thank you to the neighbourhood constituencies. Thank you to Maruga Tableland. We are red, we are ready, and we are responsible. I thank you!
Yeah, we are red, we are ready, and we are responsible. So tonight, we have the Young Army. The Young Army's men, tonight, I want to hear the Young Army make some noise. Maruga, Maruga, make some noise! Point Forteen, make some noise! But now, we are going to our brother's place. We are going to a place where it's very next and very close to Point Forteen. And tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I say, "Labre!" Is there anybody from Labre? Is Labre in the house? And this is Labre's Choice. It's Mitchell's. Labre's Choices. Labre's Choices. And tonight, I introduce to you your next Member of Parliament for Labre, Mr Randall Mitchell. Good evening, Point Forteen! Life is better with hot water in Maruga Tableland. Kennedy is the remedy for the constituency of Point Forteen. Point Forteen, how are you feeling this evening? Look at people! So I ask again, are you red, ready, and responsible? Are we red and ready to reject the yellow and blue and stand firm for all that is true? Are we red and ready to reject the yellow and blue and stand with the PNM who always stands with you? Allow me to acknowledge Prime Minister of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago, the Honourable Stuart Young Senior Counsel, the man who leads the next chapter for the people of Trinidad and Tobago. But ladies and gentlemen, I mean, it is obvious. Can you picture the young, the strong, the vibrant Stuart Young next to Kamla Passad Bissasa? I acknowledge his worship, the Mayor of the Borough of Point Forteen, all my Cabinet colleagues, my Member of Parliament for Point Forteen, and my brother Kennedy Richards, executive members of the People's National Movement and executive members for the constituency of Point Forteen and the constituency of Labre, all my fellow candidates in this very important election, and you PNM people and the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago viewing on our live streaming platforms and on television and on the radio. Ladies and gentlemen, many of you may know, but many of you may not know, but Point Forteen is a place that I call home. I lived here for about six years, six very formative years, and this southwestern part of Trinidad has shaped who I am today. I have traversed these streets in Clifton Hill, in Tishay, in Hariman Park, in Fanny Village. I have played football in Mahika Oval. And I want to today extend gratitude, at least, from the people of my generation for the work that Kennedy Richards has done and the People's National Movement to refurbish the Mahika Oval. I played on it, it was a decent ground. Not as good as it is now. The knees are so good, I can't play again. But today, my son, as he did a few weeks ago, can journey to Point Forteen with his club and run track on a very excellent facility in Point Forteen. I am the product of Victor Mitchell, my father, and your former Mayor in the Borough of Point Forteen. And I am the product of Valerie Mitchell, my mother, a lifelong educator, spent for the most, for the most part at the Separiya Senior Comprehensive School. And they have both shaped and instilled in me a culture of public service. But Point Forteen, I am to tell you today that I have a new home. A new home in the constituency of Labre. Anybody from Labre here? Paloseco, Santa Flora, Banjereva, Kukran Losbaho, Ranjo Kimado, Erin. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great honour and a privilege to be selected as your standard bearer for the constituency of Labre. And I must report to you, to everybody in here, that since being selected, I have been warmly embraced by the executive, the PNM members, and by all of the residents in the constituency of Labre that we walk and we greet as we campaign in these elections on April 28, 2025. And on that note, I wish to extend, on my behalf, on behalf of the executive, the members, and the people of the Labre constituency, our heartfelt gratitude to our former Member of Parliament, Mr Stephen McClatchy. And we applaud him for his commitment to public service and his commitment to the people of Labre. Ladies and gentlemen, the communities in the constituency of Labre, Brighton, Santa Flora, Paloseco, have all played key roles in the development of the energy story in Trinidad and Tobago. But ladies and gentlemen, you know now is election time. And when it's election time, all kind of Zandoliers crawl out of the hole. So we have Zandoli, who I call "The Yellow is the Code for the Confused and the Corrupt Crew." We have, ladies and gentlemen, you know they have Swizzle Stick on the People Computer, trying to tell you what is best for your children. They have somebody named Matara French, who tried to tell you without, without the use of expletives, who you should vote for for your future in the next general election. But talking about Zandoli, there are three misfits. Three vagabonds and ragamuffins loitering about the place in this southwestern peninsula. One name is Elda. One name is Keza. And the leader loiterer name is Roji. And they're walking up and down the place making video, telling you and telling your children that the PNM never do nothing for nobody. Well, Kennedy dealt with that in the constituency of Point Forteen. But they are hoping that you have very, very, very short memory. But the story, the energy story, and the story of industrial development in Trinidad and Tobago is a story of Labre. And it is a story of the People's National Movement. For those of you who may have forgotten, when you drive by the Union Industrial Estate, or when you drive by the Labre Industrial Estate, and you see all them plants, you see all these roads, you see these big smoke stacks, all of those things were developed by the People's National Movement government for the people of Labre and for the people in the southwestern peninsula. And that is the evidence, that if nothing else, is the evidence of the vision and the commitment to the people of Labre, to the people of Point 14 and for the people of Trinidad and Tobago. It was the PNM who delivered to Labre the largest power plant in the region, the TGU. It is the PNM that did that. It was the PNM that built a 56 cross-country pipeline that feeds that same TGU plant, as well as all of those other plants and industries on those estates. It was the PNM that did that to secure our energy future. It was the PNM that delivered the deep water port in Brighton so that our energy may be traded or that we have access to further develop our energy and our industrial sector. Ladies and gentlemen, it was the PNM in 2004 who had the vision to build a world-class fabrication yard and dock right in Labre. It was the PNM that did that, that is now operated by Tofco. And for the first time, the people in the southwestern peninsula, our welders, our fabricators, were building our energy future on our own soil right here in Labre. And you know, ladies and gentlemen, it was the same Roji, the same lead loiterer, the same ragamuffin, the same person who crossed Kamla and now hugging up Kamla, it was him! Same one who asking for your vote now, who in 2013, when BP was committing to invest in building an installation, 2016, when BP was interested in putting and creating, building and installation right in Labre to the people of the southwestern peninsula to get jobs, tens of millions of US dollars to be paid for that work, it was the same Roji who told them to pick up your rig and go. They didn't have the best interest of the people of Labre and the people in the southwestern peninsula at heart. But they asking for your vote now, they coming and they asking for your vote now. Tens of millions of US dollars gone! That could have developed families, it could have developed small businesses, it could have developed the local economy in the southwestern peninsula. But selfishness and arrogance, pick up your rig and go. Ladies and gentlemen, I offer you a bit of advice today. When you see them, when they come by you, when they ask you for your vote, I want you to tell them, pick up themselves and pick up Kamla too and go! They do not have the best interest of the people of Labre and the people of Point 14 at heart. The one time Kamla Pasar Visser went down to Labre was to turn the sod to the CGCL plant. And it took Prime Minis-, well Minister of Energy Stuart Young, Prime Minister now, to journey all the way to Japan to renegotiate that so that the country, you the citizens of the country and your children do not lose billions of dollars. That is Kamla Pasar Visser's legacy in the southwestern peninsula. It is Minister Young and former Prime Minister Dr. Rowley who has always stood with the people of Labre. We can't count how many times they have journeyed to visit that Tofco yard to ensure that business is coming to the Labre constituency and to the Point 14 constituency, to the southwestern peninsula, to ensure that our people have jobs, to ensure that we have revenue-earning capacity. It is Minister Young and it is former Prime Minister Dr. Rowley who stood with us and who stood with the people in the southwestern peninsula. Not them! Over the past five years, the PNM has also delivered through the current MP, Stephen McClatchy, greater water delivery for the people of Karapal. In a Karapal Wells project that now supplies over 340,000 gallons of water to 20,000 residents. And water now flows abundantly, three times a week. The PNM also delivered the newly commissioned Labre Community Centre in Labre. A brand-new community centre for the people of Labre and environs to come together as a community. To build a community, to have weddings, to have birthday parties, to have meetings, to secure the future as a community of the people of Labre. And the new youth skills training centre at Paloseco and Los Baho and a technical training skill centre in Santa Flora was also delivered by the PNM to this constituency. But ladies and gentlemen, I say on this platform, and I say anything big, Labre deserves more! Labre deserves more! And I pledge to continue to deliver for the residents of Labre, the constituency of Labre, to build on the infrastructure, the physical infrastructure, to continue to deliver improved facilities such as we're getting a brand-new Paloseco velodrome, which you all know, and which I know, was the premier sporting facility in the entire country at one point in time. And very soon it will again be the premier sporting facility in Trinidad and Tobago. We have a very young demographic, a lot of young people in the constituency of Labre. And I commit and I pledge to you today, ladies and gentlemen, to improve on the access to many of our government programmes targeted to the young people. Through Minister Foster Cummings and the Ministry of Youth Development and National Service, through the brand-new skills training centres that we have received within the constituency of Labre. But ladies and gentlemen, I have to take a little bit of time to talk to you about my substantive portfolio, which is Minister of Tourism, Culture and the Arts. And what we have done over the five years to progress the sectors of tourism, the sector of culture and the arts. And tourism is a very important sector, a very important sector. It is a part of the productive sector in Trinidad and Tobago and plays a really significant role in diversifying and expanding our economy. Our tourism sector, our culture and art sectors was significantly severely and devastatingly hit through the Covid pandemic. But during that pandemic, it is this caring PNM government that delivered over $25 million. $25 million in Covid relief grants to all our entertainers and to all of our cultural workers. A caring PNM government did that during the pandemic. And I pause for a cause to tell you, for the driver of PDN 6926, please attend to your vehicle immediately or someone else would attend to it for you. I have always wanted to give that announcement. Ladies and gentlemen, following that, it was our government's position that we needed to get workers back out to work quickly into productive work and into the earning capacity. And in that regard, we did a lot for our entertainers to be able to travel to the US, to be able to get their visas, to be able to earn in the US where they had opened up their borders and they had opened up their activities so that our entertainers could have earned. We also very quickly received entreaties from Royal Caribbean Cruise Lines and we signed an MOU with them to get our Trinbago nationals out on Royal Caribbean cruise ships to earn significant monies. The lowest paid for the unskilled, 900 US per month. And at the very top, which we have delivered, officers and doctors earning significantly more US. And we have done that and we have assisted a thousand people in getting jobs on these cruise lines. And they so love Trinidadian and Tobagonian people, they keep coming back. And Disney Cruise Lines and MSC Cruise Lines, they all come back. In our cruise industry, we have done a lot of work to ensure that cruise lines come here to the port of Port of Spain. And the more cruise lines come, the more people that come to our shores is the more money we make in the country. Every cruise visitor spends on average 50 US dollars. And every crew member spends on average 26 US dollars. That means our vendors, our taxi drivers, our tour operators all earn significant foreign exchange during the visits of these cruise ships. We have also done a lot to build airlifts. We saw the return of KLM Airlines. We saw the return of Liat. The Caribbean Airlines now flies to many more destinations in the English, Dutch and French-speaking Caribbean. And that gives us more access to a lot of destinations, but it also gives the people of those destinations greater access to experience our tourism products. In our accommodation sector, in our hotel sector, we have done a lot to develop hotels. And you see hotels? As Minister Young has said in the sandals example, a hotel is like a small little economic engine. A hotel where you stay, we have visitors stay at the hotels and when you stay at a hotel, the government receives hotel tax, the government receives value-added tax. But also those hotels to feed and entertain and to maintain their properties, they need to hire our workers. They need to buy our agricultural produce. They need to buy our manufactured goods. And we have done a lot, we have produced, we have developed, we assisted in the development of the Bricks, the Asa Wright Centre, the Grand Riviera Hotel. We have done a lot and there are currently at least two hotels under construction and we are doing a lot to develop the hotel sector as it relates to the accommodation sector. Ladies and gentlemen, I am certain that you all would agree with me. And returning to culture now, that this Carnival 2025 was the best Carnival 2025. And not only does Carnival give us an opportunity to Lego and release, gives us the opportunity to practise our culture and our cultural heritage, but Carnival is a serious and significant economic earning festival. And you heard Minister Young in one of his pronouncements, manifesto promises to develop the Arts, Culture and Innovation Council. And I agree with that because it has a massive earning potential, this Carnival. And there is no better people to assist and to chart the development of our cultural sector than the stakeholders themselves and the people who practise it. Not the government, not the minister. It is the people who practise in these areas, the people who have skin in the game. They are the best persons to do it. So in terms of our Carnival statistics, I can quickly tell you, because I'm running out of time, that this Carnival, over the 19 days prior to Carnival Tuesday, so in 19 days prior to Carnival Tuesday, we received approximately 42,000 visitors to Trinidad and Tobago. 42,000 visitors to Trinidad and Tobago in a small window. And of those persons who came here, the average visitor expenditure per person was $15,336 per person. So just taking visitor spend alone, visitor spend alone, we earned in this country close to $660 million during the Carnival period. And that does not, that does not take into consideration what you spend to go to parties, it just takes into consideration what the visitors spend to go to parties. It doesn't take into consideration what the corporate sponsors put into the development. It doesn't take those things into consideration. So you can see that the Carnival, our festival, our world-renowned Carnival is a massive economic juggernaut. It is a powerhouse that we must continue to develop. And ladies and gentlemen, the steel pan. Over the last few years, this PNM government has done a lot to stand side by side with the steel pan movement, to develop the steel pan, to push the steel pan, not just in Trinidad and Tobago, but regionally and internationally. We went to the United Nations and we got the United Nations to agree, to agree on World Steel Pan Day, August 11th, every single year. And we don't just celebrate that in Trinidad and Tobago, we celebrate that in all the places where we have our diaspora, right? In some places like South Africa where we don't. We celebrate it in Japan, it is celebrated in London, it is celebrated in Miami, it is celebrated in New York, it is celebrated in Canada, it is celebrated up the islands, World Steel Pan Day. It is this PNM government, through the assistance of Stuart Young in assisting in developing the legislation, who went to Parliament to declare the steel pan the national musical instrument. the national musical instrument of Trinidad and Tobago. Placing, placing the steel pan developed in very, very difficult areas in East Port of Spain. Placing it at the forefront of our national pride. And there are many other things that we did. We did, we were able to accomplish intellectual property with a geographical indicator with the steel pan. This PNM government stood by the steel pan movement, walked hand in hand with them and developed the steel pan movement. And I'm very proud to say, in Labre, Nightingales, we placed fourth in the panorama. Fourth in the medium panorama. And I'm very proud and I look forward to working with Labre Nightingales and developing that steel pan, that steel band. So ladies and gentlemen, I want to say, the PNM has always stood by you. The PNM has always stood up for you, always stood up for you, including that man in white. The PNM has been able to develop the constituency of Labre and the constituency of Point 14. And this, this industrial development is our heritage. Ladies and gentlemen, Kamala Posad Visser has been walking up and down and promising you to reduce taxes and promising you to spend all the money on all your problems. And nobody has been able to successfully ask her where you're going to get the money from. And I called upon the media today, ask Mrs. Posad Visser where you're going to get the money from. Because we know her by her past deeds. In 2014 and in 2015, when the oil price and our revenues plummeted, they went to NGC and they raided NGC and corruptly squandered the money wastefully all over the country. So I am telling you today, you in the southwestern peninsula, in the Labre constituency and in the Point 14 constituency, she can't tell you where she get the money from. But I bet you, she will raid Heritage Petroleum, she will raid the NGC, she will raid NEC, all companies situated in our constituencies and all companies that we have an interest in. Do not let her raid our heritage. Do not let her do that. So come this election, we do not ask you only for your vote, we ask you for your continued partnership. We ask you to help us build a Labre, build a Point 14 that we and your children, my children can be proud of. The story of Labre and the story of Point 14 is the story of the PNM. So on that day, April 28th, when you wake up in the morning, you say your prayers, you brush your teeth, you take a shower, you put on your clothes, you go to your polling division, your polling station, and you rest the vote solidly behind the People's National Movement. And on the evening of April 28th, we will all say, breadth is the PNM. Bread is the PNM. Bread is the PNM. And we shall prevail. Let's hear it again for the Honorable Randall Mitchell. You can do better than that, Point 14. And tonight, I would like to recognize every candidate. I saw a few outside, maybe if you could just come inside and just wave to the crowd and show them that you are here in Point 14. So all candidates, start up and, so we have the Sepharia candidate here, Dr. Mohammed. We have Sean Dubay, yeah. But give them a better Point 14 welcome than that. All candidates. We have Tabakit in the house. Point 14, all these people here, showing again, tired. We have Tabakit in the house. That's, that's more like it. So our next speaker needs no long introduction. He has fought for us on many different fronts, both in the country, both out the country. And he has brought us great success here in Trinidad and Tobago. And tonight, people of Point 14, I welcome you, the man who leads the Youngs Army, the man who leads our country, the chairman of our political party, the Honorable Stuart Young Essie. Point 14, let me hear you. Labre, let me hear you. Maruga, let me hear you. Trinidad and Tobago, let me hear you. Good night, good night, good night. I'd like to start off by paying my respect to the Mayor of Point 14, Alderman Clyde James, to your Member of Parliament and my colleague Kennedy Richards, to Minister Randall Mitchell, who will be the next Member of Parliament for Labre, to Minister Paula Gopispoon, leading our next MP for Maruga Tablean, Lisa Atwater, to the various candidates that I've seen gathered here tonight from Sepharia, Tabakit, Dubay. I am proud, of course, of course, to our matriarch and the People's National Movement, to our Auntie Joan, to all of the other executive members of the PNM. I know Deputy Political Leader Rohan, Minister Rohan Sinan is here. We have Irene Hines here, I saw Indar Parasaram. And to all others who are here, welcome, welcome to Point 14. Citizens, I have to have some serious conversation with Trinidad and Tobago tonight. So I would ask you all to pay particular attention over the next few minutes. I know it's late and I don't want to keep us here too late. The first thing I'd like to say to all of the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago, right here from Point 14, is that as the Prime Minister, I recognize that in today's volatile world, in today's world where by the day, things are changing across the globe, tariffs and all these types of things taking place, there is a sense of nervousness. I recognize here for us in Trinidad and Tobago that we are concerned about issues of crime and our safety and our security. That we, the citizens, are concerned about the cost of living. That we, the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago, are concerned about our economy. And I recognize that, and that to me as the Prime Minister is a good sign. Because it shows that citizens are zeroed in, it shows that citizens are connected. And I want to start tonight by saying that we in the government acknowledge these problems. We in the government acknowledge the sense of nervousness and that little bit of anxiety. But I have come here to the southwestern peninsula tonight to carry a conversation with you and to the rest of Trinidad and Tobago. Let your hearts, let your hearts not be fearful. Because you see, you have a government that has built a stable platform. You have a government now that is ready to write the new chapter. You have a Prime Minister who has come here tonight to ask everyone here, everyone in Point 14, Sepharia, Tabakit, Labre, Maruga Tablean. Where? Faisalabad and all over Trinidad and Tobago to give us the mandate, give us in the People's National Movement your vote. Because I intend for us to take Trinidad and Tobago in a new direction. What you have seen and what you are seeing unfold in front of you in a fast, vibrant, energetic manner is change. Because we recognize that Trinidad and Tobago requires change. We recognize and I recognize and the Cabinet that I lead recognize that the time for change is now. And I am asking you here tonight, Trinidad and Tobago, personally, as a citizen who is fighting for Trinidad and Tobago and fighting the future, for the future of our young children that we see around us, who is prepared to take on anyone who stands in the way of Trinidad and Tobago and our progress. I am asking you for your confidence and to see that the energy, the winds of change are behind us in the PNM to take Trinidad and Tobago forward in the next five years. Because we have serious decisions to make. This is not about old talk. This is not about standing up and making false promises. I will never do that. This is about us avoiding 15 to 1. This is about us avoiding the IMF. But tonight, in the time that I have, I want to address Trinidad and Tobago on two important issues and items. Our youth and energy, very briefly. Because you see, I know, as well as you, the more senior amongst us know, that our young people are crying out. I recognize that our young people across Trinidad and Tobago are looking for direction. They are looking for leadership, they are looking for a sense of purpose. They are looking for people to believe in them. And young people of Trinidad and Tobago, our young citizens, I stand here tonight and give you my commitment that I will work with tireless energy and I will fight who I need to fight with to ensure that our young people of Trinidad and Tobago have, have a future ahead of them. And only a PNM will do that. You heard Kennedy Richards, you heard Kennedy Richards remind you what our UNC government did in dismantling youth camps, what they did in taking apart programs that a PNM government had set up for our young people. I want to share a story with you all tonight. Because you see, we can't continue the way people want us to continue. I was coming back from Tobago this morning, having spent some time in Tobago over the last couple of days, fighting for the people of Tobago and the people of Trinidad and Tobago. And you would have seen yesterday that very successfully we managed to get all of the Tobago stakeholders around our table. Farley on the THA, Watson Duke and his other partner in the PDP, all of the hotel association, the fishermen, the farmers, those who have business. And by the end of that, I had gotten consensus from all of them that we should invite Sandals to come. I tell you that story. And they all signed to it. And I saw Watson Duke in the papers this morning, who wasn't there to sign, confirm he welcomes Sandals to consider Trinidad and Tobago and Tobago in particular. There are two parts of that I want you to understand. The first is that it is only a PNM government under our leadership could call Adams Short and invite him and his whole team to come back to Tobago. After those on the other side ran them and every opportunity they get in Parliament, criticize and attack and say, where Sandals gone? I tell that story so you will understand that you have a PNM government and you have someone who is offering himself to you, the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago, to always do what is right for the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago. To go from meeting to meeting, to go from meeting to walk with candidates, to go from walking to candidates, to take on the office of the Prime Minister and to conduct the business all the time on your behalf. The story I want to tell you is when I was coming back on the plane this morning, I heard a voice ask the person sitting next to me, do you think it would be possible to speak to the Prime Minister? So immediately, I, I said yes and I ushered for him to come and speak. And when I looked up, it was a young man. A young man dressed in a cal uniform as one of the attendants on that short flight from Tobago to Trinidad. And the young man said, may I ask you a question? I said, sure, of course you may. And he said, I used to live in Shafford Court. Shafford Court is in my constituency and HTC Development from the 1980s. And he said, I went to school and I, coming out of school, had great difficulty in getting a job. And he said, I, after getting a job, now I'm having great difficulty in getting a house. And he said, I want to ask you as the Prime Minister and as my representative, my MP, what is your government's plans for people like myself? And you see, that was a very, very important interaction. Because that is a question that our youth are asking all across Trinidad and Tobago. And I was happy for the opportunity to engage him. And I'm happy that he gave me the opportunity now to use that to tell the whole of Trinidad and Tobago what our vision is for the future for our young people going forward. Because you see, this PNM government is constantly thinking about how realistically and responsibly we can look after all of our citizens. And I'm particularly concerned about our young citizens because they must not lose hope and they must know that people are fighting for them. So I told him, the first thing we're going to do is reform the education system. Because we recognize that the education system now is outdated. And when I've been asking questions, whilst some schools may be And when I've been asking questions whilst some schools may be offering what we call technical vocation. Not every student is academically inclined. Not every student wants to do what the books say. And I stand here tonight as your Prime Minister, asking for your mandate and your vote along with a PNM government on the twenty eighth to implement the next set of plans I'm going to share with you. We will focus and prioritize our spend, your spend, your tax money on ensuring that schools have the resources for the tech voc so that students who don't want to pursue academics because they are not inclined to that, you still have to do your math and your English and the subjects. But you now have the opportunity in secondary school. So whilst they may offer it, I have been getting reports that unfortunately in some areas, there has not been enough focus. Because as I told that young man, every citizen needs a plumber. Every citizen at some stage needs a mason. Every citizen at some stage needs a joiner. Every citizen at some stage needs someone who can do that technical vocation work. And you are no less a citizen for excelling in those areas than the brightest doctor or the brightest engineer. And that is my attitude and that is my promise and commitment to the young people. We are going to reform the education system. And I could go further than that. Because I was sitting with Prime Minister Mia Motley, the Chairman of Caricom on a plane a few Wednesdays ago up to Jamaica and down. And I began that conversation with her because you know why? CXC needs to change the syllabus. CXC needs to recognize that times have changed. And Prime Minister Motley from Barbados, who's the Chairman of Caricom, says she agrees and believes the same thing. So immediately there now, with a PNM Prime Minister, you have a commitment along with other Prime Ministers in the region that we are going to look at reforming it for our young people. No, the point is, it is a young, energetic, vibrant, dedicated, patriotic PNM Prime Minister that will do that. Compared to the stories you would hear of those on the other side when they're sitting on a plane. That's the first thing we are going to look at. How do we improve and reform our education system to start? So people don't feel left behind. You don't feel, well, if I am not good at science or I am not good at history, it makes you any less of a citizen. No, because we require and we have to provide as the first thing. It is this government in the last five years that took the decision for the first time in our history and set up the Ministry of Youth Development and National Service. Those of you following would have heard me give a commitment to Tobago that Tobago will get its own Mylat program when we are voted in on April twenty eighth. That ministry that Minister Foster Cummings leads has been doing tremendous work. And it comes out of a PNM recognition, a PNM policy and a PNM dedication to ensure that our young people are given opportunities to learn about heavy machinery, to learn about air conditioning, to learn skills that you can now employ. So that was the second part of the conversation with the young man, saying that we are going to promote that young people because the government cannot provide jobs for everyone. And nor do I want our young people to just say they want a government job. What I want the government to do and what we're going to do is we're going to provide more resources to that ministry to ensure that we get young entrepreneurs who could have their own businesses, work with their friends, be successful in life. We're going to teach them and give them the skills to do that. The next thing we're going to do is we're going to use technology to form a massive job data bank that is not only government jobs. When you look in the newspapers, you look on social media, you look around, you see so many private businesses having job openings. But if you here in Point Fortin don't see it because they're stuck somewhere on somebody's notice board in another part of the country in San Fernando, et cetera, how is that helping the young people of Point Fortin? Or helping Lisa down in Maruga Tablean? Or helping Faisalabad? Or helping Tabakit? Or helping us in Port of Spain? So the time has come for the Ministry of Labour and I can tell you, we have approved the project and we will get it done as a PNM government to have a database that all private sector, all government jobs could be put up there on a proper computer database that you type your name, you put in your information, what your skill set is, and it matches you with job opportunities. Because our young people deserve direction. Our young people need to be shown that there is hope and there is opportunity and we will deliver it. The next PNM government in writing the new chapter that I'm sharing with you tonight is going to deliver that change. This is not old talk. This is not somebody standing up, reading a script that somebody gave to him or her and trying to mama guide the population. This is PNM talk on the young, correct? Because you see, you see, red, red is the word. Red is the word. Housing. So the young man's second part of his conversation was about housing. There is no easy solution to housing. Anybody who says otherwise is leading you down a garden path of no return. But the next PNM government that you vote in on April twenty eighth, I am giving you the commitment here tonight as the Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. We are going to start a program across Trinidad to start. Because Tobago is under the control of the THA. We'll have discussions with them. But in Trinidad, we're going to start a program where on state land across Trinidad, we are going to develop to start three thousand lots and provide the infrastructure, the electricity connections, the water connections and the house plans for young people as first time owners to purchase and to build their own houses according to those plans. We are going to start, we are going to start with the HTC database for first time young people and young owners with a mortgage that they could afford of between one million and one and a half million dollars. We will provide you with the plans and you will build your own house for your family, a two bedroom or a three bedroom to start under a PNM government. And that is what we will do as a start for you. Because you see Trinidad and Tobago, we will do it responsibly. We will do it thinking of the next generation. I would never, a no PNM minister would stand up on a platform and promise twenty billion dollars worth of goodies that you cannot deliver. So you would see as we roll out and the manifesto is coming. Everybody want to see the manifesto. It's about timing. It's about timing because you see how things are. But tonight, young people, young citizens of Trinidad and Tobago and the parents who are guiding them and the grandparents who are guiding them who want better for our youth. That is how we are going to start addressing our young people. We're going to make sure that the money is put in ways that they become productive, proud, patriotic citizens of Trinidad and Tobago. And that is PNM policy. Just, just before I touch very briefly on energy, I want to assure the senior citizens of Trinidad and Tobago once again. Because I understand all of them, meaning the UNC and their agents are still trying to terrorize you that a PNM government is going to interfere with your pension. Well, I stand here tonight again as your Prime Minister to again give you the public assurance again that the PNM government is not tomorrow and is not after the twenty ninth of April when you vote us back in for five more years touching the senior citizen pension. It is safe, the goalpost is not moving, they are lying to you. The UNC has embarked on a campaign. The UNC has embarked on a campaign of lies, dishonesty and misinformation. Where by tomorrow lunchtime, they will take what I have said here today, tonight, and they will manipulate it into their lies. Watch and see. And that is what yellow is the code mean, but we say red is the word. Today, today as the Prime Minister, I had to call a press conference that I didn't intend to call when I woke up this morning. Because you see, we received some news today about what we've been working on with the Dragon Gas deal. But I want to remind the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago that yes, I went as Prime Minister as soon as I could, a very hastily called press conference for one reason. Because I have given a commitment in keeping with what we have done for the last nine and a half years that we will be honest, truthful and transparent with the people of Trinidad and Tobago. Because that is what we deserve in Trinidad and Tobago. So when I got the news on your behalf, because it's for you, huh? It is for the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago. It's for those young children I see. Yesterday I was walking in Tobago with MP Chamfakujo and a car pulled up on an intersection. And I looked at it and the door opened. So I looking for somebody to get out. Two little children, two little children. That high, ran out the car, across the road, start to hug me up. Says, Shorty, our Prime Minister, we little more Jane School. That, that and when I was walking in here is the same thing. It is for those children, your children, your grandchildren and our future. That, that is what gives me the energy. That is what gives me the drive. And that is what gives me the authority to stand here tonight as your Prime Minister and to say, I will continue to fight for Trinidad and Tobago and for the future of Trinidad and Tobago. And I want, I want to warn, I want to warn Trinidad and Tobago to look closely and carefully at the behavior of people who don't want what is better for Trinidad and Tobago and Dragon Gas is better. Twenty sixteen, we came up with the idea. By twenty eighteen, we had negotiated a term sheet. Twenty nineteen, sanctions stuffed it. Who was it that rejoiced? Who was happy and the same headline the media running now is what they ran in twenty nineteen, Dragon dead. You all remember that? It wasn't dead. Your PNM government, your PNM government that you put into office. And it was Dr. Rowley and myself in twenty twenty two found a way into the halls of the decision making in Washington DC. And we eventually got two OFAC licenses, one for Dragon and one for Kukina Manikin. Very quickly thereafter, we got the licenses from Venezuela. Thirty years for Dragon, twenty years for Kukina Manikin. You didn't hear them then, immediately, all along, they're trying to pull it down and put in Trinidad and Tobago on notice tonight of two things. Anybody who tells you that they are happy and that they're celebrating what has now happened, which is to me, another hurdle in the road. We have crossed many hurdles getting as far as we have. And I stand there tonight and give you my commitment that you gave me the mandate and you gave the PNM the mandate. And I will continue to fight for our children and for you in Trinidad and Tobago. We will fight, we will fight, we will fight for what is right. Because I know that the PNM government that I am a part of and that I am privileged to lead. And if you give me the mandate on the twenty eighth of April, that I will continue to lead on the twenty ninth of April. Will, will bring home what is best for Trinidad and Tobago. So let me, let me tell you why there is no need to be nervous about it and no need to be anxious. Because they like to sell a story that all the eggs in the dragon basket, not true. You have seen in the last three years, five years, because we've been working on it. UNC did nothing between ten and fifty, not a single gas supply contract. It takes you a while when you start working. You would have seen me last week explain with a BP project that we got in twenty twenty two. It took two and a half years to get the gas. So it takes time. There is plenty, there are plenty, plenty, plenty projects going on out there. In Labre, they just finished building the infrastructure and fabricating for Mento, which was EOG BP, employing four hundred people from Labre and Point Fortin. Because we fought for that. When Ansel Roger stood up and say, take your rig and go. As an irresponsible leader, that almost shut down Tofco. But we fought for Tofco to get the work right after. As that platform sailed out, immediately they started building the large fabricating, the largest, largest infrastructure ever done in Trinidad and Tobago at Tofco for Manatee. Manatee is coming in in twenty twenty seven. I met with Shell's head globally of gas a few days ago and we have plans for that. But you see, as you should have learned about us by now and about me, I, it is all about timing. You have to do the work, then you make the announcement when it is real and when it happens. Not like them on the other side making promises they could never deliver. So in the gas sector, I will speak about it on another night. But everything is going to be fine. We will continue to fight. We have a lot of projects going on in Trinidad and Tobago's waters. And Manatee will come on and there are other things that we're working on. But do not give up hope because you would have given up hope in twenty nineteen. You would have given up hope when we got the first OFAC license and they said, oh, Maduro Vex. I could tell you all tonight, if I could share this phone with you all. I was in touch with the government of Venezuela on the way down here, commitment there. And then having conversations as well with some of the decision makers we need to speak to on the way down here as well. So you give us the mandate and I will bring it home in some form or fashion for us. All, all our eggs, all of our eggs are not in the dragon basket. Let me quickly, quickly touch on the refinery. Because the refinery affects the southwestern peninsula from Claxton. They come down to the southwestern peninsula. Don't buy this stupid talk that Roger and others trying to sell about we shut down Petrotrain. By now, everybody knows that is not true. We closed the refinery because the inefficiencies and our drop in oil was costing us, the taxpayers, billions of dollars. And I remind you tonight, in twenty eighteen, we had to write off a loss of sixteen billion dollars. So don't buy that stupid talk. But immediately we went out and So don't buy that stupid talk, but immediately we went out and asked, who wants an opportunity to run the refinery? Roger took the union's money and set up a company called Patriotic Energies. We work with them because I used to fight for OWTU and every OWTU worker who is truthful will tell you that. That story that I believe is Kennedy told or Randall told about Roger and Kamla fighting, I was the one, when Kamla was busting Roger's throat and gave instructions, get rid of him from Trinmine 2015. I, I did that matter for Roger and helped him to keep his job, but I ain't taking blame for he eh. We gave them the opportunity, Patriotic, we sat, we worked with them, we tried to make it work. But if you have snake oil salesmen around you, you're always going to make the wrong decisions. So you squander the money and you end up in that and you couldn't make it work. But I didn't stop there, we didn't stop there, we kept telling the world, there's a refinery, bring your crude, bring your money and start it back. We went through a second process, we got someone, again, is the UNC attacking it, UNC attacking it, didn't work out. The third process, I told you all the other night, Jindal, his mother is the fourth richest woman in the world, he is one of the most successful billionaires in India, wanted to come, came, looked at the refinery. Who mashed that up? Kamla, the same Kamla who holding hands with Roger now. And that is what denied you that opportunity, but we didn't stop. We went through a proper transparent process, there is now a Nigerian firm, that is a billion dollar US firm, that has gotten the opportunity to negotiate with TPHL to reopen that refinery. I am telling the people of Point 14, people of Labre, people of Claxton Bay, people of San Fernando, people of Oropuch, all of the surrounding areas. You have to tell Ansel Roger, who does not represent the full voice of all of the workers, tell them you want that refinery opened and it not costing your cent, because it will re-employ our workers. They're going to use local labor, do not let the UNC and Ansel Roger spoil that because of some backroom promise that she made with him, that they will get the refinery. Because where is he getting the crude from? Where's he getting the money to pay for the crude? Where's getting the money to restart the refinery? Ask yourself that. So people of Point 14, people of the southwestern peninsula, have hope, understand the change has come, understand that the platform that has been built for the last 10 years is a more than stable one. But understand, the People's National Movement now is offering the citizens a new direction, a new chapter, asking you all to give us the mandate, because we are red, we are ready and we are responsible, committing to you, the people of Trinidad and Tobago, starting with the People's National Movement, that we will protect Trinidad and Tobago, that we will fight for our young people, that young boy standing up there waving the flag is for him and the future generation. To tell our senior citizens, you are safe under the People's National Movement, to tell our core supporters, we are looking after you and we will continue to do so, and to tell our young people, we have plans that are real plans and we will implement the plans and we look forward to delivering those 3,000 lots of land with house plans for you to build your own house and have pride. So tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I ask humbly, I ask for the citizens of Trinidad and Tobago to give me and the People's National Movement your vote, give us the mandate, give us the mandate to continue to deliver in a responsible manner for Trinidad and Tobago. Give me and the PNM the mandate to continue fighting for Trinidad and Tobago, both here and abroad. You know the competence, you know the intelligence, you know the energy that the cabinet has. You look at the 41 candidates that we have put forward, the only party that has put forward 41 candidates, and every single candidate is a quality candidate. Lisa Atwater, Maruga Tablean, Randall Mitchell in Labre, Kennedy Richardson, Point 14, Natasha in, Natasha in Separiya, Tabakit, Dubey, me in Port of Spain, North Saint Anne's West. Give us the mandate, let me fight for you and our children. And on the night of the 28th of April, join me in my constituency at Bali Day House. Join me and all, as we say, great is the PNM, great is the PNM, great is the PNM, and we shall, we shall prevail.
It has been a great night in Point 14 and what a bumper evening it was, evidently with a huge crowd from the borough of Point 14 and a number of persons also coming in from Labre, from Maruga. Here with us this evening was also the candidates for Separiya and also, of course, those who spoke, the incumbent Kennedy Richards, I'm told that he is a remedy for Point 14, and also Lisa Atwater, the next MP for Maruga Tablean, and of course, Randall Mitchell, coming from, coming to you, the next MP for Labre. Kennedy Richards, of course, you can't beat him and he spoke about what he has done for the people of Point 14 over the last five years. Four commu-, four, four new schools, four primary schools, two new community centers, the new, the new Mahika Oval with a new name, the Kennedy, the Archibald Leon Highway to
Secondary School, and I proudly endorse Lisa Atwater to be the next member of parliament for Maruga Tablean. At my time at Maruga Secondary School, she has been a mentor, she has been a guiding role in the life of all young people. And I urge you young people of Maruga Tablean to join forward and share and be a part of this experience as we take Maruga Tablean forward. On April 28th, vote Lisa Atwater for Maruga Tablean.
Welcome to the constituency of Maruga Tablean. We may be rural in location, but we are big on heritage, we are big on diversity, we are big on harmony, we are big on respect for each other. We are diverse, we have diverse population, diverse religions, cultural backgrounds, and all of those qualities going to making us the unique melting pot that we are. I am proud to be part, to be a product of this rich cultural heritage that is Maruga Tablean. So I've walked the corridors of this institution all my life, I've been here for 30 plus years. I know the students, their parents, I know the priests, the fishermen, the agriculturists, I know their hopes, I know certainly aware of the challenges, and I just want to be part of the solution, the solution of being all in for Trinidad and Tobago, and all in for Maruga Tablean constituency, youth development and training, entrepreneurship and the host of other services that will help improve our quality of life.
My name is Mrs. Antonia Naby. I will be endorsing Lisa Atwater, the candidate from Maruga Tablean, as our candidate. The reason why is because Lisa Atwater is a daughter of the soil, born in Madingo Road and she came to Maruga over 30 years now, serving at Maruga Composite as an educator. So I think that given this opportunity to serve Maruga Tablean, Lisa will be the best candidate. I endorse her for the Maruga Tablean, because at Maruga Tablean constituency, it will be
So folks, where do we go from here? What do we want for our future? I am not merely asking for your vote, I am asking you to believe, believe in a better tomorrow. Let's go all in, all in for Maruga Tablean, all in for Trinidad and Tobago.
New chapter for TNT, we're red, ready and responsible. Vote PNM, great is the PNM.
It is a beautiful constituency, it's known for the warmth and love of our people, it's known for our beaches, our rivers, our trails, our fauna and flora, but most importantly, we are also known as a very resilient group of people who are located in these northeastern
Roger Monroe is a water. Roger Monroe comes from the belly of the grassland, that is where I support him.
I think he done a very good job, also he see about his community with Tamalat, and also is a man that shares a good society.
Roger Monroe has demonstrated by last four years and a half, he was a creative member, that this been a commitment, that upwards the list of people that matured in the due to situation. And that's why I support Roger Monroe, he demonstrated with me, and PNM have displayed maturity and get the job done.
My vision for Toko Sanegrandi is hinged on the past representation that I would have been able to give to the constituency from 2020 to present. It is my dream to bring this constituency of Toko Sanegrandi to the level of the urban communities, but not removing the rural aspect of the love, the warmth, the appreciation and togetherness of the people, meaning that I intend to work tirelessly to be a constituency on par with urban communities, having all the amenities and having all that is necessary. Some of the projects that has already been started and ongoing, the Ojo Road Recreation Ground Upgrade, the Sanegrandi Indoor Facility, the Sangri Grandi Swimming Pool in Supram Village, also ongoing is the development and full construction of the Shark River Bridge in Matlock, the Long Bridge in Grand River. We have many retaining walls in the Montevideo and various communities along the north coast and in Matlock, ongoing road works and development as well. The works that is intended to be completed soon of the new Churchill Roosevelt Highway Extension into Sangri Grandi. Toko Sanegrandi has seen a large increase in housing development and it has also encouraged persons from outside to come into our constituency. We have ongoing works to the Toko Lighthouse and we intend to see much more development in the local tourism aspects. One of the mega projects that would have been completed 2020 to present is our brand new Sangri Grandi Hospital Campus, 106 bed, state of the art, fully equipped hospital for the people of Toko Sanegrandi and environs. We have also seen the construction of over 200 plus starter homes, completing 340 benetistry and one or several families, spanning from Valencia all the way heading into the north coast going up to Matlock. The fishing community on the coast could expect in upcoming projects, the development and construction work being done to the Matlock Fishing Facility, to the Grand River Fishing Facility, to the Kummana Fishing Facility, the Toko Fishing Facility. And bringing these fishing facilities to a standard that is acceptable to all. My people of Toko Sanegrandi, let's go all in with Roger Monroe, let's go all in for the People's National Movement, let's go all in for Trinidad and Tobago, let's go all in for a better Toko Sanegrandi, let's go all in for continued development of our many
New chapter for TNT, we're red, ready and responsible.
New chapter for TNT. We're ready and responsible.
Alright. Well, the reception is not too good down here for me. Um, you know, we can't really have the after, after talk like we want to have it. But tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning there's going to be um, the morning program in the morning. And then lunchtime will be, well, well, will be, we'll be taking her to see fear from Pastor Google. And then we take the walk to San Juan tomorrow to bring it to you all live. Let me see if I can drop into.
I don't be on that too.
Into San Juan, well, in the forest bin. Can I not to show where again the um, can I not to show where again the maxi to go to the forest bin? And I'm not even seeing, I'm not even seeing um. They have any maxi I dropped to San Fernando. Eh? They have any um, I dropped the forest bin?
Hey, I think I remaxi it. Hey, I think I remaxi it.
Man, tell me why you didn't go to police yet? Which way to get in um, taxi figure out there? Yeah. So I didn't do a walk down that road? A long walk or? So you ain't got no car going back this way? Wrong way, wrong way.
Just back so that I go into point.
Oh, and I'll see. Alright, better than well. Yeah. Alright, so I walk back this way, then you go and take uh, another table.
We should fire it.
They were? I don't walk back this way to go to the point. No, look at see um, Tabakita Lemia one. Hey, which valley, which valley Tabakita um, Maxi Lemis?
Well, they all go back inside because I hear they talking about a maxi. But I didn't come down where the Tabakita too.
Oh, I walk, I walk with this.
I think he's still inside organizing, but I can see him pretty nice. They are that, their best chances still go, you see, with this, by chance? You must have shit by chance, you know, for the maxi. The maxi still inside?
Yeah, yeah, I know they have one, I know they have.
Go back inside, let me see my.
I go to the other. Hey. Officer, Roger, like he shot case. Let's go.
I don't want to walk in here, I waste my time in them. Well, yeah, well, they was in, so, but they tell me um, they tell me Tabakita near, they Tabakita near. But I ain't see no. Hey, hey, no um. It's the finding the Bava Galem. Nine. Uh, there's um. Alright, you know what? So now you have some more to leave. I didn't leave. Yeah, 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 man. I'm not even seeing. We have rumor to get um, we have rumor to get it on?
Yeah, this is for a fair north African man.
Yeah, I know.
You going for the pet?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, there he coming, he gonna sleep with me tonight.
No, your mother.
If you sleep with me, you can't go in that box. Officer, let the man who be coming, I sleep with him, sir.
It have, it have fed him, it have Barry brother.
He can say what he want, I run in that bus.
Yeah, yeah, part of it, and yes, I am.
You can say what you want. If you come in that bus, I sleep with you.
Uh huh, yeah.
We, we in charge of that bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I did, hey, hold on. So who worked here last time? I didn't want to do any of it.
You, you carry your man fucky. He want fuck.
You can't tell me I'm not forest man, no. Alright, now let me go off the bus, let me go off the bus. I ain't, I ain't going to that, I ain't going to that. Nah, 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 let go, let go. Let go, I ain't going to that. Nah, 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 I ain't going to that. Yeah, he gonna, yeah, he gonna lose talk, he gonna, they not, they not me, nah? Yeah, from the road, from the road, you know. You telling me? The man telling me I going and traveling with Borispin, with Borispin all the time. When they drink the little alcohol. Now you tell him about, you don't know, no. And here he gonna lose talk, he getting on. I go walk to my um, I go walk and get my um, my vehicle and go down the road. One, two. Well, let me tell you one thing, eh? You see darker in our behavior? You see darker in our behavior? I'm making him a duty to report darker in our behavior tomorrow. Because you can't have people representing a constituency. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't um, call up names of the constituency, but I'll deal with it tomorrow. But it is very, very distasteful that himself, I didn't come down with the um, with the maxi or the bus. For that kind of loose behavior to be carrying on with. Nah, 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 nah. Nah, 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 nah. I very first time that I've gone on for walks because my name is down in the constituency. And even on the, even on the um, thing to move around. So I, what kind of madness is, I tell you loose behavior? And alright, you, you make it as a little joke, alright. But then they continue with the same foolishness over and over and over. What kind of over? Yeah. Sometimes I laugh about the serious thing, you know? And those, and let me tell you something, and I keep saying it. Those type of foolish behaviors is what has caused problems. Because there's one family. It's supposed to be one family. And regardless of whether, because never say, you don't know, but you see, when they like to drink and get stupid and drunk. Those are the type of behavior. Because here I went to the maxi, the bus. One of the, one of the persons who in the bus, I know, I know them well. And the, and a neighbor mine, or a former neighbor mine. And she was like, what are you doing here? I saw him, he was doing here. Because this was the first time I saw her to walk. So I went to the meeting. So you know, we, we know sad, not chatting, talking in the bus. Not realizing that the man um, continuing the foolishness coming into the bus with the foolishness. I would not mind if I had a sit down on top one of the coolers. I would not mind that. But you see darker in our behavior? Nah, 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 nah. No, he's not the driver. He's not the driver, the driver, no, 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 he's not the driver. He's just one of the supporters who came along. He's one of the supporters. Okay, they'll be there on a constant basis, moving around with them. But you can't begin over that kind of loose behavior. And what it would have take to give a man a drop even San Fernando? Or in the um, by Mover Junction or Polispin? Or even Chavonas? What it would have take to do that? Come on. Hey. So we are supposed to have a little after party, well, after tour? But you can't make them spoil the night, nah? But nevertheless, we heard the Prime Minister talked about the, talking about um, the deal. Good night, how far again um, to get um, yeah, transported in the Polis, um, San Fernando?
Our minority leader, one is enough, Mr Kelvin Morris. Our minority councillor supporting our well-able minority leader, Mrs Petal Daniel Benoit, a daughter of your community. Our youth speaker, Ms Deniesha, I am so proud of you. From your journey in the parliament, from your journey in the training for women political leaders, future women political leaders, I am so proud of you. My mountain, George Tobago East Young Lady. Congratulations, Deniesha. I also want to recognise with us here today, our former assemblyman, Mr Beckles, you can stand with him at knowledge. And all of you beautiful PNM people, PNM people, PNM people. I have a story to tell because I have been so much on the ground. I have been so present, I have been so with you so often that people tend to forget. You know when you get something so much and so often that you take it for granted? So while I've been walking the communities as we go through this campaign period, people saying, but I didn't see you. And I can remind people when I saw them, when I interacted with them, when I was in their gallery talking to them, when I was walking along the streets listening to cries. And through all the years from 2015 to now, one of the things I proudly says, I never left the ground. And brothers and sisters of Castara and Tobago East, the fact that I never left the ground. I know the ground going to carry right through to the 28th of April. And the ground going to carry right through to the 29th when I am declared and I'm getting ready, getting prepared for another swearing in ceremony. Brothers and sisters of Castara, I stood with you. I stood in the gap for you. I was always accessible to you. Every phone call, every WhatsApp message, every buff when I walk the communities. I stood with you and for you. Constantly listening, constantly advocating and constantly delivering for you, the people of Castara and you, the people of Tobago East. I remember we had some challenges with the PTSC bus service for Castara and Bloody Bay and Lansomie for a while. And advocating and advocating, I would get the phone calls. I would get the phone calls especially from Miss Grace, then I should say, Ayana, the bus ain't working properly. And when we walk Castara and when we walk Lansomie and when we walk Bloody Bay as a team, now I want to big up my constituency office team. Because every single walk, every single journey, every single challenge, you all were there with me. So you would know of all the causes and the concerns. And I remember constantly reaching out to PTSC and advocating, reaching out to the board, reaching out to the managers at PTSC. And you know what was the real hurtful thing in Castara? When they start to see improvement, you know they didn't give Ayana credit. They give every Tom, the Caribbean a dog credit for bringing the services back. Besides the MP, who took your calls, who took your WhatsApp, who tech the cussing? But you know what? That didn't stop me from continuing to advocate. Because as your Member of Parliament, I understand that even though you may forget, it's my duty, even with the forgetfulness, to still work on your behalf, to still deliver for you, to still stand in the gap on behalf of the people of Tobago East. Because I too am a daughter of this constituency. I ain't come here, I born here, I born in Tobago East. And it is right here that I'm raising a family, right in this constituency, right in Tobago East. I'm raising three children. Brothers and sisters, the advocacy work saw PTSC collaborating with maxi taxi owners in Tobago. And a maxi taxi concessionaire service was established to ensure that residents of Mariah, Masonor, especially those of you living in Bloody Bay and Lansomie and Castara, that you will get a better access to public transport and a better quality of service. And I felt proud on the day when I stood in the hall of the Palatové Community Centre and we had a formal ceremony to mark this beautiful arrangement. Because on that day, my friend, my fellow constituent of Tobago East, Grace Lingotabanchi said, we had some troubling times, but we are seeing a better day. And I felt proud. I felt proud when she gave her testimony. I felt really proud because my advocacy work paid off. Brothers and sisters, I want to talk about what we did for you in terms of improving your access to quality water and a regular supply of water for the persons of this part of Tobago East. And we saw the construction of the Pine Hill Booster Station. When that booster station was commissioned, I could not attend because I had prior engagements in Trinidad in my capacity as Minister with responsibility for gender and child affairs. And I remember my sister in service, Shampa Kudjo, attending some of the commissioning ceremonies. And she said to me, she said, I didn't get to go to the one in Pine Hill, but I got the opportunity to go to the one in Hope. And she said, Ayana, one of your constituents cried tears of joy because for the first time, she was able to just turn on her tap and water flowed. But coming to Pine Hill, I remember the manager of Wassa telling me, he said, we got a beautiful testimony from a young lady living in Palatové. And that young lady said she was so grateful for the booster station in Pine Hill because now she was able to wash without fear. Do her preparatory works for her children without fear because water was flowing through her taps. And because of that booster station, 100 residents of Pine Hill, of Palatové, 100 residents are benefiting from an improved water supply. I know, because one thing I don't ever do is fool my constituents. I like to keep it real. One of the things I said, whenever I step away from this life, I want to be known for someone who gave real representation with real results. So I've always made it my duty to tell you the truth. I know for the past few days, residents of Castara would have been having some challenges with your water supply. And I want to assure you that I've reached out to the manager of Wassa in Tobago and I've been advocating on your behalf. And if by the end of the week, things don't improve, I'm going in Trinidad and complain to my minister colleague. Because let me tell you one thing. If I talk at a certain level and things don't work out, you could ask my former boss. You could ask my former prime minister. I would take it from level to level to level. I don't like to set up people. I would talk from the bottom and if I ain't getting results, I keep going higher and higher until my constituents benefit. Because that is why you elected me. You elected me to advocate on your behalf. So Castara people, if by the end of the week or your business end fix, call me, text me, message me. Everybody give me number. It's the same number from since I worked in community development, 7784412. I want to talk about some of this assistance we gave through central government again. Through self-help and NGO within this community, within the Bloody Bay, Castara, Lansomie community, wanting to do work to help vulnerable persons in this area, in this part of Tobago East. I remember that the individual come in trying to get access to support through self-help. And I felt really proud as your Member of Parliament when self-help, that agency, which is headed by my colleague, my sister in service minister, Shampa Kudjo Lewis, was able to give a grant to the family on focus evangelistic ministries to help them to acquire the material to do the work on their facility so that they could serve the people of this part of Tobago East. That is your central government and your MP advocating for you. I assisted students of Palatové and Licon Primary School with wifi boxes. I remember during COVID and during the online learning period, when I perched, when we got some tablets and laptops and we distributed them to the schools. And I remember visiting Palatové and the principal saying to me, we are thankful for the devices, but unfortunately, some of them don't even have the wifi. And I remember I reached out to B-Mobile and I said, I would pay for the boxes and I would pay for the first month if you partner with me so that the students would be able to get it for the period. And it didn't hurt me because I'm a mother. It didn't hurt me because I'm a mother who had children going through the same thing. It didn't hurt me to take the money out of my pocket and pay for those boxes to benefit the children of the community so that they would be able to get the wifi to do the online learning. Brothers and sisters, I have represented you as a Member of Parliament. I remember meeting right here, I think it was right here, with the residents of Lansomie and the residents of Lansomie raising the issue of the street lights not being functional for quite a while. And I remember giving them the commitment that I would reach out to a friend at Tiantai. Because one of the things I've tried to do over the years is to build meaningful collaborative partnerships and relationship. Because trust me, you can't do it alone. You can't represent alone. You have to build friendships. You have to find allies. You have to find people willing to work with you. And I felt really proud. Senator Hislop, as the chairman for Tobago East, could attest to this. That the report came in and then they called back the chairman for Tobago East constituency to say that they were happy to know that all the street lights were fixed. I did the advocacy work. I remember again, as your Member of Parliament, understanding how important it is to build women throughout Tobago East. Understanding how important it is for women to network, to learn from each other, to help build each other up. Because we understand if you empower a woman, you just don't empower an individual. You empower society. We are the ones who rock the cradle. We are the ones who nurture the future generations. I brought Chian Chat right to this community. I told my staff and they are here, I told them we will go to Castara. We will make sure that we create the opportunity for the women of Castara and Palatové and Lansomie to come together, to fellowship together so that we could understand the challenges we face as women and help each other to cope better so that we could become better mothers, better wives, better business owners, better entrepreneurs, better, better individuals all around. And we did that. We brought Chian Chat here to this beautiful community. I remember again, looking at all the issues in communities such as Bloody Bay with water. And trust me, there's get plenty issues because has get the calls. The water issue has been a challenge. And advocating and reaching out to my colleague in the Ministry of Public Utilities then and getting the agreement to continue to work across Tobago and across Tobago East to improve water supply. I remember Shampa, my very, very dear sister in service, we were having a conversation after cabinet, post-cabinet one Thursday. And one of our colleagues from Trinidad said to us, how it is that I so lucky? Everything I so want, I get in. Everything, every time they hear anything come up for public utilities and Wassa is Tobago, 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 Tobago. And we simply said, Tobago will get what Tobago wants. And that was just the fact. Because we have used our voices to advocate around the table. We have used our voices to build the relationships and the partnership. But beyond that, we had colleagues who were willing to support our vision for a better Tobago. So they were the national development. We weren't playing Dolly House in Trinidad. When people talking about send down two girls down there, we weren't playing Dolly House. We were well-educated, competent young ladies who went to Trinidad to put down serious work. And as my sister in service said to the other grand distribution ceremony, we just tell people, take it easy, Ayana Shampa, we're always doing it. Brothers and sisters of Castara, since COVID, approximately 100 SCA students from the school in Lansomie, Castara and Palatové were recipients of the chair package. The chair package is an initiative I started during COVID when I recognised that children were struggling. And that first year, I said, when the child leaves the SCA classroom, he or she must have something to look forward to, something to just cheer them up. Because I understood from my training in psychology that this was a very turbulent period. And we started the chair package initiative. We have not stopped since then. Even this week, we started distributing to every school in Tobago East. And come the day of SCA, at the end of the exam, every single boy or girl in a school in Tobago East writing the SCA would walk away from that exam with their chair package. That is your MP working for all of Tobago East. Brothers and sisters, people have been asking what PNM central government do for us? Well, I could understand the asking what the MP did for us. Because you have to ask the MP that. You have to ask us that because every five years is like a performance appraisal. Every five years, we go through the process of being appraised by you and then you will give us a renewed mandate. And I want to thank you all in advance because I'm confident that I will remain your Member of Parliament. You see, when you do the work, you have no problem with being appraised. So thank you in advance. But they have been asking, what did the PNM central government do for us? I remember in my first term, when there was a lot of cry, oh crying Tobago, about us not being able to get good some Trinidad on time, person not being able to move between the two islands properly. And I remember a cabinet under the honourable Keith Christopher Rowley, supported by every member of the cabinet, the decision was taken to purchase two brand new ferries for the sea bridge. We didn't say we got fixed one, buy a second hand one. The decision was taken to invest in two brand new ferries for the people of Tobago. And I remember in parliament, when we were going through the budget debate at that time and getting persons on the opposition bench complaining about the amount of money that was going to Tobago and whatever. And I couldn't understand it. I couldn't understand why my brothers and sisters on the other side of the bookers would want to deny the people of Tobago the opportunity to travel freely between both islands. Because I understand and I strongly believe that a stronger, stable Tobago is a stronger, stable Trinidad and Tobago. We are the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago. If one island is thriving, the other would thrive. If one island is falling behind, all, both of us, the whole nation would fall behind. So I couldn't understand. But you know what? We didn't let them deter us. We purchased those ferries. And let me tell you something. I think it easy to be jumping on a plane almost every other day between Trinidad and Tobago. I remember there was a time when I couldn't determine if, when I reach on the airport, if I would get to Trinidad on time or if I had to go back home. Because there was a period when, as we just said, the plane and them used to break down. I remember that. Yes. I remember one time when we land, we had to land and was the fire trucks and the ambulances on the plane because of some issue. I've been through it on your behalf. I faced it on your behalf. And I remember cabinet discussing, how can we improve the air bridge? How can we ensure that persons who need to traverse between Trinidad and Tobago, who can't take the ferry, that they have a better journey? And the investment was made by Caribbean Airlines. I remember them coming to cabinet to do a presentation to us. And I remember them talking about the cost and benefits and profit and whatever. And I remember your Tobago East MP, your Tobago West MP and our Tobago East former prime minister saying to them, profit or no profit, we making sure we get the ATRs for the air bridge to fix the people of Tobago. And we acquired a new fleet to service the air bridge. We acquired a new fleet. It's not perfect, but we started the work. It's not perfect, but we got new aircraft for the air bridge between Trinidad and Tobago. Brothers and sisters, and they're still asking, what central government do for us? What PNM central government do for the people of Tobago? Let me go again, through the Ministry of Youth Development and National Service, almost, I think almost about 100 million, I don't want to tell a lie, but a good bit of money was spent recently to help business owners in Tobago through Netco. I remember going to the district grand distribution ceremony and seeing a number of young Tobagonians who were beneficiaries of the grant on the Netco. Netco is not a THA initiative. Netco is coming out of the Ministry of Youth Development and National Service. Again, another visionary ministry of your PNM central government. It's our administration. It is during my time, our time, that a Ministry of Youth Development and National Service was established. And beyond that, through the training programs being developed by that ministry and implemented nationally, there are young constituents who are benefiting. I remember a young mother reaching out to me that her son wanted to participate in one of the training programs. At that time, it was a linesman training program, but they weren't offering it in Tobago. When I reached out to my colleague minister, the Minister of Youth Development and National Service, and let me pick up Minister Foster Cummins, the incoming, incoming again MP for his constituency. He said to me, he said, Ayana, no problem. We will ensure that that constituent is facilitated. And that young man got the opportunity to go to Trinidad. He got his stipend, he got someplace to stay and he got his certification. That is representation. That is your central government ensuring that our people in Tobago benefit from the national pride. And I want to talk about our contributions to the vulnerable in Tobago. And specifically, the work that has been done through the Ministry of Housing and Urban Development. Today, I had the great pleasure of witnessing a grant distribution ceremony. 60 families, my brother Kelvin was there. 60 families in Tobago received grants from the Ministry of Housing and Urban Development. We know, we know that under the division of the THA, there are grants available. But on many occasions, when I ask my constituents, are you aware of these grants? They don't know. You know why? Because since this administration came into being, and I'm going to be very frank, since they came into being, some of the services that we were able to do freely from my constituency office. For example, the grants on the settlements. Before constituents come to the office, they would get the forms. We will help them fill them out. I would do a letter endorsing the application, asking for favorable consideration. You know the instructions I get? They don't want no letter from me and they want no forms coming from my office. Let them come directly to them. Now, there are some persons who don't know what form to go there and ask for, where to go. And they're saying to me, someone was elected to represent everybody. No, I ain't elected to represent PNM people alone, every single individual in Tobago East. They're saying to me, they don't want the persons to come with the forms from my office and with the letters from me. Fine, we allow them to find a way. But me and stupid, me and dottish, I know that if Tobago want to play hardball, I have to make sure that what is available in Trinidad gets to my constituents in Tobago East. So, under the housing, construction subsidy and the home improvement subsidy under the Ministry of Housing and Urban Development, we ensure that our constituents are serviced. So let me tell you, today, 31 families received grants for home refurbishment of up to $20,000. And 21 families received grants for home construction of up to $50,000. I felt so proud today as a mother. When I saw a young man, I think he was about 24 years old, coming to collect his grant for his home construction. I remember even those who worked from the Ministry of Housing, they were really impressed. They say, how old are you? Because he looks so young. But that is it. When you work as an MP and you work to empower your people, whether they're young, young or they're old, old, you give them the opportunity to become the best version of themselves. So that young man can now go out and not just build a home, start to build a home. He could go out and start to build a family and put them in somewhere comfortable. That is what we do for you. That is how we work for you. That is what your central government does for you. And I want to take us down to the road of what would have happened previously. Since 2021, because the PNM central government don't do nothing for we in Tobago, but I just given you a few ministries. Since 2021, under the same Ministry of Housing and Urban Development, 232 Tobagonians benefited from grants at a total of $7.85 million. I can't tell you how many grants were given out by our settlements division because quite frankly, they don't tell me, they don't advertise it, they don't inform us. And as the minority councillor said, they don't answer the question when they raise them in parliament. One thing, they can't accuse all your girls doing in parliament, you not answering. Because every question they give, a resting answer on them. He's in the House of Representatives, Senator Hislop could attest. Or in the Senate, I just go and give a good account of the ministry and the work they're doing. Let me move to social development and family services. Since 2015, and it's since PNM central government don't do nothing for Tobago people. Since 2015, we have spent $1.5 billion on senior citizens pension. If central government didn't like Tobago people, it doesn't want Tobago senior citizens to be healthy and happy. You think they could not find a way to hide with their money and then give us? No, they did the right thing, the honourable thing. We are and would continue to be a responsible government, a red, ready and responsible government. So we ensure that our people, our senior citizens in Tobago benefit fully from all that is available under the Ministry of Social Development and Family Services. So $1.5 billion going to senior citizens pension since 2015. Over $68 million in public assistance grants. And many persons would usually come to the constituency office asking about how they could access these grants. And we give them the advice. We reach out to the welfare board, we reach out to the welfare officers and guide them through the process. Over $68 million. More than $83 million distributed in disability grants. To those persons who may not be able to work and earn an income, they receive that support from the Ministry of Social Development and Family Services. And $8.5 million going to children in Tobago with disabilities. And that is a policy that would have started under our administration. That disability grant for minors was something that we implemented, your PNM government with your sister sitting around that cabinet table. Brothers and sisters of Castara, since 2019, and you know food card is a big talk and a big thing in Tobago, right? People always saying, and they take ready food card, nobody ain't getting food card. When you get to the bottom of this story, it's not the red card they taking away now. It's the ones from the THA. Listen, I taking some cuss out there on the road. And when I get down to the nitty and the gritty, it's rarely the THA food cards that they're giving to who they want to give. They're no longer serving every single Tobagonian freely and without, you know, any malice. They're picking and choosing. But our central government, we operate by policies and procedures. And because we are responsible, transparent and accountable government, we have ensured that Tobagonians who qualify for the food card, the food support, they receive it. So since 2019, 10,441 Tobagonians get food card. And they say, they said, them say, central government ain't do nothing for people in Tobago. Or you're telling me the story and go get dog. Brothers and sisters, as we look towards the future, as we look towards heralding a new Trinidad and Tobago, under new visionary leadership, under my friend, my colleague, the honourable Stuart Richard Young, Prime Minister of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago, I want to assure every constituent, every resident of Tobago, every citizen of Trinidad and Tobago listening on, that better days are ahead. Yes, yes, we would face our challenges. Yes, we would face the economic turmoils. But I am confident that we have the skill, the ability and the negotiating power to safely take us through, to safely take us through any economic storms. I'm confident that my prime minister would be able to shepherd all of us into a better tomorrow. And Prime Minister Young would have already indicated to us when he spoke in Tobago some of his plans for us. He spoke passionately about his concern for Tobago's security and our border security. And again, he reaffirmed his commitment to the people of Tobago that when we receive those high-speed interceptors, that tool would once again be allocated for specific use in Tobago. I remember around 2020, 2021, when the fisher folk were coming to me complaining constantly. It was then my prime minister who served as Minister of National Security. And I remember reaching out to him and Minister, then Minister of National Security, came to Tobago. He walked charlevere with me. He heard the concerns of the fisher folk there because we were getting the issues of piracy and persons saying that our borders were open and illicit activities were happening, illicit trade in terms of guns and drugs and so on. And I remember then, when he launched the two high-speed interceptors for us. And time went by, things fell through the crack. But brand new interceptors would be delivered to Trinidad and Tobago. And he gave the commitment that tool would be specifically designated for us here in Tobago to keep our borders safe and secure. I want to speak of a project that is coming out from the ministry that I sit at, where I guide and where I lead. where I guide and where I lead a team of young competent professionals. I'm really proud I've had the opportunity for almost 10 years to guide those young professionals at the Ministry of Gender and Child Affairs. And from our work, from our collaboration with international agencies, we would have been able to bring meaningful development to Trinidad and Tobago. It is under my stewardship, it is under your MP for Tobago East, it is under Oya Gal, Ayana Webster Roy, that we got international support to develop our national strategic action plan to end gender-based violence. It is under your Ayana Webster Roy, your MP, that we got the technical support to establish Trinidad and Tobago's first national action plan on women, peace and security. And you know why I feel real good about that? Because I remember in 2023, when I went to Washington, I think it was early 2023, and I went to Washington with Minister Hines. We were going just to listen and to observe and understand from other territories, how women, peace and security has been implemented. And why that strategy was used mainly in areas where there's conflict, where there's war. I took the information, I said, although we're not in a war, we're not in any major civil conflict, we have a battle now with gang and gun violence. And I remember coming back home and sharing information with my team and motivating my team and getting the Canadian government and the UN system to support us. And when we launched our national action plan, we became the first country in the Caribbean, the first country in the Caribbean to develop a national action plan on women, peace and security. And I'm extremely proud to note that they are using our action plan to model so that Carricom could use it, other Caribbean islands would be able to use it. And I am both, I am a Maga, I just simply doing the work to the people of Trinidad and Tobago, so that my people in Tobago East will be able to live better lives. And one of the key initiatives under the action plan is what we call Spice TT. It's an integrative approach towards addressing community issues, where we take the public health approach and we marry with the social intervention approach. And we get this beautiful activity initiative program that will pull together different resources and target communities. And while the action plan will be implemented nationally, we have selected some specific communities of focus. And I remember when we were going around the cabinet table and I was talking to my colleagues and saying to them which communities I would target because we initially started working in Beetham even without an action plan. So we decided Beetham, Marabella, Enterprise, Maloney. And initially, when my Permanent Secretary gave me the proposal, there was one community identified in Tobago. And I said to my Permanent Secretary, I said, "I can't take this to cabinet with just one community identified in Tobago." I said, "We have seen an increase in gun violence in Tobago. I said, "It's not centered on just one constituency." I said, "The both constituencies must be able to benefit from the pilot." And I said, "Whatever we learn from the pilot in whatever community is chosen, it would then expand throughout Tobago." So I said to my Permanent Secretary, "He going with Golden Lane", because I saw the reports coming out from Golden Lane. And Denise said, "Because I saw the reports coming out from Monk St George, I committed Monk St George." So in Tobago, we will be having Spice TT implemented in Golden Lane and Monk St George. And the ripple effect of that would touch every community in Tobago. Every single community would be touched by the ripple effect of the action plan when it is fully rolled out nationally. I want to talk about this step program again, developed by your girl, your humble servant, leading a team of young competent professionals. When we recognized that persons who are survivors of gender-based violence needed an opportunity to emerge better from the situation, we created this Survivors Transformation and Empowerment Program, where we have a two-pronged approach. We provide funding opportunities for the NGO civil society organizations working in the response to gender-based violence. So if you're a church, if you're a club, if you are a women's group, a police club, and you have a focus, a special project that deals specifically with persons who have gone through gender-based violence, you can access up to $50,000. And since, since we implemented this, I have been talking in length and breadth of Tobago, begging Tobagonian groups to please apply. And you know, earlier today, when I spoke at the grand distribution ceremony, I said, "You know what? We too laid back as Tobagonians. We feel that if we still don't wait home, that the grand good is landing in our pockets. If we still don't wait home, by some miracle, the money good is landing in our lap. We have to get up and get. We have to go out and ask questions. And when we ask the questions, we get the forms, we get the support. We have to follow it through." Too many times, we give people forms. We tell them, "If you're having an issue, call us, we'll come and we'll help you." And then when you go back to them, they question you and you ask them the question. I love to ask you back the questions. You got the form, yes. You got the number, yes. You call us, no. You fill out the form, no. Why? It's too much I work, I just wore the grant. As I said to the people today, if you don't have a ticket, you don't have a chance. Your ticket is your form. If you don't have a ticket, you don't have a chance. We have to get up and get Tobago. It's people, we too laid back. And if you continue with this laid-back attitude, others will come into our communities and benefit from what we should be benefiting from. We should make sure that we make full use of all that is available. Back to step. So I spoke about the $50,000 available to the groups, et cetera. For those individuals, those persons who would have been directly impacted by gender-based violence. So you might have been a victim of domestic violence, you might have unfortunately been a victim of sexual assault. Once you come to us, we give you the opportunity to access funding, either for a scholarship to help you to train up to $10,000, or a funding to help you to either work on creating a business opportunity, another $10,000. And why is this important? We recognize if we didn't want our survivors to be re-entering into violent relationships, et cetera, we needed especially a woman to be economically empowered. And that is why we developed this step program. And I also want to remind all of us as Tobago East people that for things to work in our constituency, we have to build each other up. That is why, as your Member of Parliament, I endeavor to bring to you training programs, such as the initiative we had with the accounting firm, where we empower you with information to expand your business. That is why we brought to you the stakeholder engagement forums, so that you can meet and to get in touch with different stakeholders to help you to become better versions of yourself. What I want to one earlier, you have a decision to make. You have a decision to make on April 28th. You have a choice to make. And it's only two choices. Because really and truly, it's only two parties could really form the next government of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago. Say a choice is one, on one hand, is UNC, and on the other hand, is the PNM. And any right-thinking citizen of Trinidad and Tobago, you know that any day, any time, the right choice is the People's National Movement. We saw the disrespect that our Tobago House of Assembly faced under a UNC Kamala Pissad-led government. We saw where Tobagonians were cut off from accessing services that were important to building lives and livelihood. I remember today at the grand distribution ceremony, Shampa said, "Because there's going to be a grand distribution for self-help soon." Shampa said to the crowd, she said, "While we are giving our grant like nobody's business in Trinidad and Tobago, under the UNC, self-help was cut off from Tobago." So persons in Tobago who had to do repairs on their house, communities in Tobago that needed funding to do self-help to create a roadway, you couldn't get it because that was the way they operated. They punished the people of Tobago. So I'm urging each and every one of you here, whether you're voting age or you're not, because trust me, children have influence. Children have influence. I send this message to the children here. It's like a go-man tell a mommy and a daddy and a uncle and a granny and them. Elections are won on election day. And on election day, the only right choice, the only choice, the only symbol is the balise. Brothers and sisters of Tobago East, we can't become complacent. We can't take this for granted. This election is not about if you like Ayana or you like the PNM. This election is about if you like yourself, you like your children, you want a better future for all. Let we win the election. Let we secure the government of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago and let we cuss after now. But let we mind our business first. Let we mind our business because not this generation alone will look on us poorly if we allow the UNC to get back in. Future generations will come and judge us. We have to ensure that we safeguard Trinidad and Tobago for all. Today, my Prime Minister would have announced something drastic that would have happened. And it takes solid sober leadership to take us through the economic storm that is to come. I am not convinced, after having observed the leader of the other side for almost 10 years, that she has the capacity to take us through the economic challenges ahead. I have observed my colleague, my Honourable Prime Minister for almost 10 years. And I can tell you, he has the character, the grit, the resilience, the education, the knowledge, the passion and the commitment to safely take us through any economic challenges. Brothers and sisters, again, I humbly ask you for your support. I humbly ask you to continue this journey with me. I humbly ask you to place your vote and your confidence in Ayana Webster Roy. Real representation, real results. Representation with dignity, representation with integrity, representation with passion, purpose, but most of all, I've always given you honest representation. So once you do that, on the night of April 28th, when you all come up to Roxso by the courtyard, we go jam from there. And then we go jam down to council office. And we will meet up with Shampa and them in the west and we will say together, "Great is the PNM, great is the PNM, great is the PNM, and we shall always prevail." I thank you and may God continue to bless us all. Brothers and sisters, Castara, Ayana Webster Roy is all in, in Tobago East. The minister gave a very comprehensive account of her stewardship as your Member of Parliament. And this is what real representation looks like. This is what real results look like, brothers and sisters. So put your hands together once again for our candidate and returning Member of Parliament, Mrs. Ayana Webster Roy. So now, brothers and sisters, we prepare to hear from a man leading the charge for the PNM in Tobago. He is a strategist, a Tobagonian first and foremost, who continues to champion the cause of this island with fire in his soul and Tobago in his heart. From Republic Bank to the Tobago House of Assembly, from Assistant Secretary to the youngest Chief Secretary in our island's history, this son of the soil has led with purpose and passion. He is the political leader of the Tobago Council of the People's National Movement. He is the former Chief Secretary of the Tobago House of Assembly. Brothers and sisters of Castara, stand to your feet, put your hands together as we welcome to address you the Honourable, the Honourable. Brothers and sisters, put your hands together and warmly welcome the Honourable Ansel Dennis.
Thank you very much. Minority councillor in the Tobago House of Assembly, Mrs. Petal Daniel Benoit. Of course, let me recognize your current Member of Parliament and your next Member of Parliament after April 20th this year, Mrs. Ayana Webster Roy. Minority leader in the Tobago House of Assembly, very effective, very diligent, very hard-working assemblyman Kelvin Morris. And yet another vibrant, intelligent and far-right speaker, Ms. Denisha Manning. PNM people, members, supporters, people from this community of Castara. It is a pleasure to be here this evening for yet another public meeting in this very important general election campaign. And Castara, of course, is a very beautiful community. I tend to think Buku is just a little bit more beautiful. But Castara is one of those fine distinguished communities here in Tobago. But unfortunately, for the last three years, it has been neglected. As a matter of fact, I saw a video clip coming out of a TPP meeting in Speyside, I think it was, where the current THA Chief Secretary and Leader of the TPP was boasting about only supporting people from Speyside and Charlottesville. And when I saw that, it dawned on me why the young men in Castara, why many of them have been reaching out to me, crying about not being able to access not only the Chief Secretary, but he's also the representative, the assemblyman for this community. And a number of them have been reaching out to me, crying neglect, no job opportunities, can't even get a meeting with the Chief Secretary, and therefore this community has been neglected. But I came here to say to the people of Castara that the journey towards redemption and the journey towards your rescue and the rescue of Tobago has begun. And therefore, I want to start by dealing with a very interesting development that took place over the last 48 hours. Because I had the pleasure of attending a meeting along with the Minority Leader and the Prime Minister and the two Tobago MPs and other tourism stakeholders across Tobago. We met with the leadership of Sandals International. And we got total agreement from all those stakeholders that notwithstanding what transpired in the past, all of us agreed that Sandals should come back to the table and talk to us and negotiate with us to ensure that Tobago benefits from a Sandals resort. And therefore, Castara as a unique community in that it's a shining example of what we like to call community tourism. I tend to say that Castara is leading the way where community tourism is concerned. Because of course, across this community and other neighboring communities like Palatovier and Parrot Hole, you have a number of unique tourism offerings, from waterfalls to eco cabins and eco villas and beachside apartments and beachfront apartments. And I am saying that the possibility of a Sandals resort coming here ought to excite the people of Castara. Because while of course, you are catering to a unique clientele, that Sandals, as it has done for St Vincent and the Grenadines most recently, and the CEO of that company was actually boasting at the meeting that when they opened that resort in St Vincent, there were only two American Airlines flights per week coming out of the United States. there were only two American Airlines flights per week coming out of the United States. And within one year of the opening of Sandals Resort in St Vincent and the Grenadines, that number moved from two flights per week to nine flights per week. And that is only one airline. So, when we have the THA talking foolishness and the Secretary of Tourism attempting to blame Caribbean Airlines, flights don't come to destinations just like that. You must have something to attract them, you must be able to negotiate with them and you must be able to partner with them. And therefore, it is critical for us to begin that change and to begin that revitalisation of the tourism sector with a Sandals Resort coming to this island. And therefore, I am saying that as reported by the Sandals CEO and as we have seen in the public space, because when you check out the news coming out of St Vincent, because the situation from two to nine flights, that is only American Airlines. But you also have Delta coming on stream most recently. You had increased number of flights from British Airways, from Virgin Atlantic, from United Airlines, from JetBlue and several other airlines. And the reality is that Sandals guests, while Sandals will bring the flights because of its branding and because of its reputation and relationships, only 50% of the guests coming on those planes will go to a Sandals Resort. And therefore, if Tobago is in such a situation, it means that while 50% of the plane will go to five-star, expensive, luxurious, all-inclusive Sandals, the other 50% will come to places like Castara because they want a different, unique experience. And therefore, all of us must be all in for Sandals. And I want to say to you that the taxi operators in Tobago, all in. The taxi operators, all in. The dive operators, all in. Well, the entire business chamber, including Diane Haddad and Demi Crookshank, all of them are all in. The farmers and the people involved in agriculture, they are all in. And even Watson Duke and Farley Augustine, who criticised it in the past, guess what? They are all in now. And of course, the People's National Movement, when it comes to getting a Sandals, we are all in for Tobago's advancement and for Tobago's development and for the prosperity of the people of Trinidad and Tobago. But in addition to the Sandals Resort, I want to say to you, the people of Castara and to you, the people of Tobago, that you also have a Marriott Hotel coming on stream, brought to you by this People's National Movement, PNM Central Government. In addition to that, we are committing to you, the people of Castara and to the people of Tobago, because we are so heavily dependent on tourism on this island, we are committing that in our next term of office, we will ensure that the marina is constructed. And I want to talk to you a bit about the benefits of a marina. Because of course, Tobago, because of where we are located, we don't experience as many hurricanes as some of our neighbours. I remember the last time when we had a serious warning that I took very seriously, to the extent that I went to the hardware and I bought plyboards and placed them over the glass windows to ensure that during a hurricane, flying objects don't come through the window, break the window. And you know, once the window is broken and that wind begins to flow through the house, the next thing that will happen is that your roof will go flying. So, I took all the precautionary measures and guess what? We're still waiting for the hurricane to come. So, we are blessed because of our location. And because of that, a marina in Tobago is going to be one of the most heavily subscribed marinas in this part of the world. Because during the peak sailing season, people who are moving by sailing yacht especially, will want to ensure that they come down to this side of the Caribbean so that they could make an easy journey across to other places like South America. And of course, during the hurricane season, people want to ensure that their expensive vessels, because a yacht is not a cheap thing, even if it's a sailing yacht, it is not cheap. And people will want to ensure that they protect their assets and there is no better place for them to come and secure their vessels than a place like Tobago because we do not experience as many hurricanes. And in addition to that, you have a number of billionaire yacht owners across the world who will sail their yachts here and some of them, you might want to call them ships, not yachts. And they will sail them here and then they will fly into Tobago first class or via private jet. And I'm saying that that marina is going to by itself create opportunities for you, the people of Tobago and Trinidad and Tobago. In addition to that, cruise ship tourism is also a significant part of our offerings. And we are committing that on this occasion, we are going to ensure that right there in Scarborough, next to the existing terminal building, we will build a brand-new cruise ship terminal building. And therefore, your cruise passengers, instead of passing through the normal ferry terminal, they will have their own terminal building where you will have duty-free shopping and access to other amenities. And I'm saying to you that by itself will enhance our relationship with other cruise lines such as Royal Caribbean and Princess Cruises and Carnival, etc. And Tobago is again in a very unique position to benefit further from the cruise industry. In addition to that, we are committing to the Scarborough Waterfront Project. And we are saying that that project by itself will uplift the capital of Scarborough. Because you don't need, you don't need to spend two or three billion dollars like that pie in the sky idea that Trevor James had, where they wanted to backfill Scarborough some 200 metres out into the sea. Where is that money going to come from, pie in the sky? And for them at election time, it was about selling you the people of Tobago a dream. It was never about any serious doable developments. And that is why they tried to sell to you that Scarborough Development Plan, $2 billion. They tried to sell to you an airport in Roxborough. I remember Watson Duke went quiet in Dubai to tell investors there he wanted to build an artificial island off Roxborough. We are not about selling dreams. We are about pursuing serious decisions and serious development opportunities for the people of Trinidad and Tobago. So, of course, all of these projects, because I can tell you, the intent of the PNM government led by Dr Keith Rowley since 2015 was to ensure that Tobago, especially our tourism and agriculture sector, was placed on a path of further development. And that is why we had opened just a couple of weeks ago the brand-new state-of-the-art modern airport terminal building at the NR Robinson International Airport. And I can say to you that by the time that facility is opened, it is going to be one of the most beautiful, it is going to be one of the most luxurious airport facilities in the region. And of course, we know it is definitely going to be the best airport in the country. So, when you bring all these parts together, the airport that is already there, the Sandals to come, the Marriott that is going through the approvals process, the Marriott Hotel to come, the cruise ship terminal building, the Scarborough Waterfront Project. And when you put back the PNM into the THA to pursue serious tourism developments, Tobago will be well on its way to greater prosperity and greater development for the people of not only Tobago, but this country. And therefore, we in the PNM, we are advancing to you, the people of Tobago, continued development. And therefore, I want to say as well, the tourism sector is in fact going to be a more critical sector to this country going forward. Because just today, we heard about the unfortunate development where that OFAC licence that allowed us to do a deal called the Dragon Gas Deal with our neighbours Venezuela. We got the approval under a previous United States government. And I want to say to you, the people of Trinidad and Tobago, do not be misled by the idiots in the UNC. Because the government did not go behind anybody's back. The government did not hide any transaction from anybody. The government took a much-needed, serious decision in partnership with the government of the United States, getting all the necessary approvals to protect this country from the possibility of any sanctions. And therefore, once we got that licence, it allowed us to pursue that relationship and that Dragon Gas Deal with Venezuela without putting any citizen of this country under any threat. And those are the facts. But of course, due to the change in government in the United States, due to the change in president, a lot has changed. Because again, the people of the United States were in a similar position that we are in now. Because there you had people making promises to cut grocery prices in half, to increase your salary by a significant amount, to fix this and fix that and fix everything and make all your problems disappear. And of course, the people of the United States supported that. And people in this country and people in Canada and people in China and people all over the world are feeling the effects of that, although they did not vote for anybody in the United States. And that is the reality that we are in. Because recently, another list came out. The new word of the day is tariffs. A tariff here and a tariff there, 10% tariff there, 50% tariff in China. Tariff war between, imagine Canada and the United States, two countries who were so close and so intertwined where their borders join each other. Two countries known for years of significant collaborations, whether it be trade, whether it be national security, whether it be immigration. All of a sudden, in the world today, we are talking about tariff and trade wars between those two countries. And I want to say to the people of this country, we have a similar opposition here, promising you all kinds of things, promising you to decrease food prices, promising you to raise your salaries by 10% and more, promising you grants, baby grants, elders grants, dog grants, puppy grants, cat grants, all kind of grants. And I'm saying to you, the people of Trinidad and Tobago, look to the United States and see what happened across there and ensure that you don't make a similar mistake. Be careful that the decision that you make on election day caused you to regret. Because I can tell you, a lot of people in that place called the United States are having regrets today. They are still waiting on the food price to go down. They are still waiting for the grocery bill to be halved immediately after the election. And I'm saying beware of those promises. So, of course, as part of the new policy, the licence has been withdrawn. And the question has to be asked, what does that mean for Trinidad and Tobago? Of course, you have the idiots, and I don't apologise for calling them idiots because that is what they are. Go to Facebook now and you will see the UNC and their supporters celebrating that as if it's only the government will feel the effects of that, as if it's only PNM people will feel the effects of that. And I'm saying anything that jeopardises the economic progress of the people of Trinidad and Tobago, every single citizen will feel the effects of it. So, this has nothing to do with any failure on the part of any government. A previous US government agreed with it. The new one decided that they want to change their mind and they pulled back the licence. So, that simply means that we have to look for alternatives. And I want to give the people of Tobago the assurance and the people of this country by extension that this time right here, this unpredictable time, this volatile time, this serious time requires ready and responsible leadership. Because this is not a jokey thing. In this period, serious decisions and serious interactions with leaders across Karikum and leaders across the world will be required to ensure that we find alternative economic opportunities. Because we know that we are mainly an oil and gas economy. And as a matter of fact, for those of you who don't know, over the last few years, we are more gas than oil, right? When we had the Petrotrain refinery, we used to produce the oil here, refine it at a loss and of course, utilise most of it here and export the rest. We closed the refinery. So, what we're doing now, we're still producing some oil that we will export at a profit. But the future of Trinidad and Tobago's economy is gas. And while we have some gas reserves, the reality is there is a need for us to improve our gas production. And that is why this government came up with the brilliant idea to partner with the government of Venezuela, as approved by a previous US government. Because you have a gas field right close to us. And the idea was to ensure that we take the gas from that gas field, build the pipelines because we have the infrastructure here and we exploit that on behalf of the people of Trinidad and Tobago. So, where do we go? And I'm saying the first place we need to go is to the polls on April 28th. Because you see what transpired in 2010 and 2015? All the tithing, all the corruption, all the mismanagement and all the scandal. Trinidad and Tobago will not survive that during this period. As a matter of fact, I am guaranteeing you tonight, this is a guarantee, you could take it to the bank and get a loan on it. If you make the mistake and elect Kamala Posad Besar to office within the first two years, this country will make its way to the IMF. And for those of you who don't know what the IMF is, it is called the International Monetary Fund. It is the bank of last resort. And when I say last resort, last, last, last resort for countries who find themselves in financial trouble, where they are in a position to default on their debt. So, they have to go to the IMF. And for those of you who were around, I was around at one year old in 1988 when this country had to embark upon an IMF programme. And I'm sure all of you who were old enough And I'm sure all of you who were old enough at the time will remember the difficulty that we had to face. Because when you go to the IMF, there are no if, buts or maybes. There is something called conditionalities. Meaning, if you want the IMF's bailout, if you want the IMF's rescue package, there are some things that you have to do where your economy is concerned. And if you want a clue of some of the things that we will be required to do, simply check out the world reports of the IMF where Trinidad and Tobago is concerned. And you will realize, for all along, they have been saying to Trinidad and Tobago, number one, your welfare bill is too high. You need to cut it. And welfare includes your old age pension. It includes your social welfare grants to disabled persons, to other persons who need to be assisted from social welfare. The IMF has been saying to us, you need to cut that. The other thing the IMF has been saying to us is that you have too many public servants employed in this country. And I want to say to you that even in that situation, we went through a pandemic, one of the most difficult periods in this country. And not one public servant lost their jobs or got paid less. But bet your bottom dollar, if we end up in a situation of having to go to the IMF, we will be required to cut at least 5,000 jobs in the public service. That is the reality. Ask Barbados, they had to cut, I think about 3,000. Barbados is currently under an IMF program. They had to cut perhaps, I'm not sure, but I think they had to cut nurses and even some police officers. And you have to ask yourself the question, is that the kind of future you want for Trinidad and Tobago? And of course, we have to look in the circumstances at other opportunities. And who do you want to negotiate those opportunities for you? Who do you want to be in the room with energy companies, with cruise lines, with airlines, with other investors to seek out opportunities on behalf of Trinidad and Tobago? Who do you want in the room? A drunken lady in her nightgown? Or an astute, competent prime minister in Short Young? Ask yourself the question. And when I say a drunken lady in a nightgown, I am not making up tales. It actually happened in the period 2010 to 2015. Go and ask Jack Warner. So we have to vote in accordance with the future we want. Because not only Trinidad and Tobago is under threat, the world is under threat. And in this period, you require ready, responsible, stable, competent and red leadership. And this is also where our tourism sector come in. Because we have been talking diversification for the longest while. And the policy of this PNM government is that if you're going to diversify and if you're going to diversify where tourism is concerned, then the first place you should be looking at is Tobago. Because we see Tobago as the tourism capital of Trinidad and Tobago. And that is why we conceptualize the airport, the marina, the sandals, the Marriott and all those other tourism projects that we discussed before. Serious leadership is required for serious times. So the first thing we need to do to protect our future is vote. The second thing we need to do is to ensure that we remain hopeful. Because I can say to you that Trinidad and Tobago, we have experienced tough times before. And we have demonstrated as a people that we are in fact tough people. We went through that difficult period of 1988 and we survived. When Dr. Rowley came in, oil prices dropped to less than $1 per barrel and we survived. You remember that period of, I think it was around 2015, where the oil prices dropped very low. Dog, let us call it dog price. And we made the adjustments. And for all those people in this country talking about hardship and talking about gas rates, I am saying to you that if we did not make those necessary adjustments, by now crap oed, smoke with pipe. Because there are examples of many countries who did not make adjustments to their realities. Because when you are running a country, you have revenues coming in. And in Trinidad and Tobago, most of our revenues come from the energy sector, oil and gas. And if the prices of oil and gas decrease, and I would say due to the current circumstances, it will become even more volatile. And if your revenues are decreasing, then the responsible thing to do is to adjust your expenditure. And in making those expenditure adjustments, of course, there will be some repercussions for people in the country. But we have to ask ourselves the question, do we want to make our own adjustments? Or do we want the IMF to enforce those adjustments on us? We have a choice. And therefore, in the period 2015 to now, what we have had is stable, responsible leadership, where serious decisions were made in the best interest of the country. It wasn't about goodies. It wasn't about pleasing certain sectors of the population. It was about doing what is best for the whole country. And therefore, we are all in for this period. We are all in to ensure that Trinidad and Tobago continues to prosper and continues to remain stable, even in this difficult period. In closing, while we are all in, there are others who are selling out. Because I am sure most, if not all of you, heard that recording. And if you didn't hear it, before I leave tonight, ask before it, I will send it to you. I am sure you heard that recording, a nine-minute clip of the same chief secretary, the same assemblyman for Paratuvia Lanzamis Paezide, who said he never met with the UNC. Who said they have no dealings with the UNC? Who said they will stand alone, win alone and lose alone? That same chief secretary was caught on tape, a nine-minute tape in a meeting with the leader of the UNC. And I have no problems if you want to join the UNC. As Jack did it in 2010. He win one election, he lose the next one badly. That is your choice. Political parties are free to join with whoever they want. That is a choice. So I do have a problem with them joining the UNC. What are you lying for? Why are you hiding under the table your relationship with Kamala Posad Besesar? And I'm saying worse than the lying is the selling out. Because the first part of that recording concerns me greatly. Because there you had the chief secretary reporting, snitching and rotting out on a fellow Tobagonian businessman about his aspirations to be the biggest black contractor in the country. What's wrong with that? Every black man should have that aspiration to be the best black businessman. And there he was reporting that to Mrs. Kamala Posad Besesar. And I'm saying to you that following that report, there was a plan. And the plan has been executed unfortunately. Because over the last three years, we have seen the replacement of everything Tobago in the construction sector. Warners, gone. Parks, gone. Car engineering, gone. Damari, gone. Who else? All of them, gone. Not one project. Bank running them down for their money. THA owing since 2021 and 2020, not $1 to be paid. And I'm saying to you, the people of Tobago, that that action was deliberate as an intention to destroy Tobago's contractors who were built up by the PNM over many, many years. And I want to say to you that I am proud of the PNM's track record where that is concerned. Because prior to us coming in office, all the roads in Tobago, you know who used to pave them? Contractors from Trinidad. And over the years, we changed that situation. Some contractors started small and turned big. And we had large contractors. We developed medium contractors. And we had smaller programs that benefited smaller contractors. We had a program called the Agricultural Access Roads Program, where every year we will build roads to ensure that our farmers could access their lands. And all those projects would be done by the smaller Tobago contractors. Since these crooks and sellouts came into office, there has not been one Agricultural Access Roads Program. And some of you might tell me that you're seeing roads being built in Belmont Road and other areas. Those are the same projects that were awarded when I was chief secretary of the Tobago House of Assembly. And these wicked idiots, when they came into office, they stopped every single project and had the contractors waiting for two years before they could restart the projects, talking about audit. Stopped the projects for two years to audit and no audit was ever done. And tell me this, I mean, they are so wicked, damn wicked. Because you as a small contractor, the project is valued at about 300, 400,000, some of them up to $700,000. When you stop the project for two years and you call back the contractor to start back, what kind of profit you could make after three years? So all the contractors boss on the project could barely finish the project. And as for the large contractors, $70 million road dung in dung in friendship to go to the airport, contractor from Trinidad. Road in Dutchfort, $19 million, same contractor from Trinidad. Road in Agai Lame Road, contractor from Trinidad. Pigeon Point Roofing Contractor from Trinidad. Even this school repair program that was totally Tobago under the PNM has now been sold out partly to contractors from Trinidad. And I'm saying to you, when you listen to that recording, you will hear plates knocking and knife and fork, I don't know if they was eating steak, ham, lamb or jam or roti. But that is where the sellout of Tobago took place. So I'm saying to you, the people of Tobago, we have to fix that. And in fixing that, we must fix them. So the journey towards fixing them begins now. Because I'm saying to you, this is an opportunity in voting Ayana Webster Roy in the east and Shampaka Joe Louis in the west. This is an opportunity to demonstrate your disgust with the agenda of Farley Augustine and his crooked team in the selling out of Tobago and the people of Tobago. And I'm saying to you, go out in your numbers. Go to the polls on April 28th. They will come with bribe. They will outspend the PNM. Because we in the PNM will not have near the amount of money they have. But understand that people power is more powerful than money power. And once you understand that and you go out to the polls on Election Day and you go out in your numbers and you vote for the Balizee, we will all be able to see that we have saved Tobago and we have saved this country. And great is the PNM, great is the PNM, great is the PNM. And we shall prevail.
PNM family, brothers and sisters. People of Castara, put your hands together once again for the political leader of the Tobago Council of the People's National Movement. Tonight, we heard the truth. Tonight, we felt the energy and we saw the future. It is bold, it is bright and it is red. We are red. Castara, are you red? Castara, are you ready? Castara, are you responsible? So on April 28th, who are you voting for? I urge you, brothers and sisters, listen to the voice of the babes, listen to the voice of the youth. On April 28th, we are voting for a party with a plan. We are voting for a team with a track record. We are voting for the People's National Movement. We are voting Ayana Webster Roy in Tobago East. We are voting Shampaka Joe Louis in Tobago West. We are voting George Richard Young in Portaspin North Saint Anne's East. And we are voting every other PNM candidate, brothers and sisters. And on the evening of the 28th of April, once we have done that, we will all sing in one loud, great accord, great is the PNM, great is the PNM, great is the PNM and we shall prevail. Brothers and sisters, you have been a wonderful audience. Please get home safely and may God bless us all. Have a good evening, everybody. Have a good evening, everybody.
...